Silence for a young individual we lost on Sunday to a back hole accident. He was a firefighter EMT with Tri-City Fire District for the past six years. Pretty tragic. Please pay for Tim and Amanda Haas and for the soul of Jacob Haas. Thank you. Shelley can do roll call.
President.
Press door. For Vice Mayor Stapleton, for five Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Six Councilman Chip is excused. Mayor DeMarrows.
Here.
We have a court, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Could you lead us in the invocation, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for giving us this day. We pray that you would comfort and heal this community from sickness and loss. Heavenly Father, please bless this council as they manage the business of this city and make decisions that will impact our future. For God, we pray that you would bless each person here today and the families they represent. We bless the city staff and the families they support. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ariano can read it.
Yeah.
Before we go to summary of current events, I want to welcome everybody. And if you are here for the public hearing for the Hill Street School, please, there's a sign-in sheet at the back that we need everybody to sign in for that hearing to track everybody. Thank you. Mike will start down there with you. You got anything?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything. Sorry.
Thank you. Jesse?
I don't, ma'am. Thank you.
Mike?
And to piggyback off what Mayor said about the dead cause, please keep in prayer the entire family. Everybody, I would like to extend my thanks to everybody that assisted in that horrible accident. Globe Fire, Globe PD, Tri-City Fire, several different companies that assisted as we saw today when they transported it. And then even 60 Motors was out there to help. So it was a horrible tragedy, but I just want to thank everybody that was involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ariano?
I want to remind everybody to try to get your vaccinations and booster shots in. We're still going through a heck of a phase. And everything you can do to help that, be attentive to requests from the public or from businesses on their own rules as you enter their stores. And we hope with a little bit more time, we can get past this event that's occurring. I see the numbers waning, so please consider getting vaccinated or get your booster shots. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ariano. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to extend my sincerest condolences to the Haas family. I have worked very closely with Mr. Haas and I continue to in our businesses. Also, I'd like to thank the staff, all the department heads and all the heads that are the people that work under these heads in preparing this strategic action plan, moving it forward. It's a living document that we are all working with. And this last retreat that we had was absolutely beneficial to all of our staff as we learned what our challenges are, what our department challenges are, and, you know, helping understand and giving them the tools that they need to keep servicing our city. So thank you, Paul, Linda. I know that you had a lot to do with setting this up, but not to take away from all of our departments. Thank you all.
Thank you, Freddie. I want to ask for a second moment of silence. This is for Alicia Nguyen Tenio. She's 41 years old. She's a paraprofessional teacher at the Copper Rim School for the last eight years. She passed away yesterday at the age of 41 after battling cancer. Please pay for her husband, Patrick, and their three daughters. A moment's silence, please. Thank you. Want to just follow up a little with Ariano, also encouraging people to get their vaccination, their boosters. There's still PCR testing, antibody testing going on in Miami at the Adonis and Highway 60 area. And they've opened up some more funding and opened up a secondary PCR testing with antibody testing. This is in the parking lot across the street from Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament Church in Miami. There's two sites in Miami where you can go get your test now. This weekend, we have, they've scheduled the second Saturday cleanup again. And everybody who's interested in helping in the cleanup, it's from 8:00 to 10:00. And please meet at the Globe Ranger Station if you want to help. And then they'll disperse you from there. Also, this Saturday at 7:00, Freeport has scheduled their fireworks show that was canceled because of the bad weather we had in January. So at 7:00, they will be doing their fireworks show. So anybody who's interested in coming down and looking at. And also in the future, and I think that's something we'll discuss in a future agenda item we'll discuss later, but there is an EIS from the US Air Force to increase their airspace. And if you, you should get educated about what's going on. They're putting in for some, you know, some expansion of their airspace flying over the Globe Miami area. So there's a website. I think the city has it on there. I have it on my Facebook site. If you want to look it up, they are soliciting comments. And your comments, time is until March 4th. So there'll be more information on it. Just be aware of it. Thank you. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, a couple things real quick. The, our Class II of the Citizens Academy will be coming up and registrations open. It was very well attended and very well thought of in the fall. So Class II will begin March 23rd, 2022, through May 4th, 2022. Graduation will be on May 10th, and we've expanded it. Seven sessions. We have our Manager of Council Administration, Economic and Community Development. Third session, Public Works. Fourth, Police Department. Fifth, Fire Department. Sixth, Finance. And we've added Library, Active Adult Center, and I think Museum at the end there, too. So that's one more session for those people we missed out before. And so we've already been taking applications, but now it's time to get your application in. And like I say, before the classes fill up. And so, and you can find that on the website and also contact Shelley. She is the ringleader for setting up Citizens Academy. Number two, just real quick, just a note to the City Council and to our employees. We'll have an email going out, I think, tomorrow, but been announced this. Our employee survey, our second annual employee survey will begin on Monday, February 14th. It just happens to be Valentine's Day. No connection, just the date that it fell on. But this way we can reach out and hear directly from our employees and how they feel. Be roughly the same questions, and so we can have some continuity. And we'll have more with results, but I just encourage all staff to take part. And one, inform Council that we'll be doing that. So they'll all be, they all have email addresses now. And they'll all be receiving the email and the link to the survey. And supervisors will make sure that everybody has an opportunity to fill it out if they choose. Number three, First Friday last week was a real hit. I mean, it was a chilly First Friday. I'm okay with that because I haven't been much chill this whole winter. But that was, that was a good one and still well attended. And I'm amazed that karaoke, I have gotten, they've gotten so good. I can't tell when they're playing music and when they're doing karaoke. But I think that's a good thing. But no, it was a good turnout. And lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Representative David Cook. We had an issue yesterday. Was on the phone with him last night. I think some people chimed in this morning. The issue was dealt with in a way that benefited the City of Globe. And so he's very responsive and very in tune with us. He does a great job of supporting the City of Globe. And so shout out to Representative Cook. And thank you for all those, Council, who helped also. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. We have a first committee to call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards or emails or calls?
No speaker cards in here.
There were no cards up there. There were no cards.
Yeah, this is called to the public, but if you're here for the public hearing, we need people to sign in.
Well, the, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, so we need you to sign in as attending. But to speak, you won't have to fill out a card to speak. We're gonna, we'll go through some instructions later. But if you wanted to call the public, it is a chance to also speak. But when you speak to the agenda item, then you can gather back and forth conversation. Call the public is usually the things not on the agenda that you just want to do a comment on. But in call the public, Council cannot pass on.
Done?
Let me check how I was talking and not talking. No, Mr. Mayor, nothing in the email.
Okay, we have no special presentations today at all? So we'll go to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to discussion of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate considerations. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A, consideration of waiver of section 2-4-10A prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Accounts payable $762,502.21. Consideration of approval of council minutes, November 23rd, 2021, meeting minutes. January 25th, 2022, meeting minutes. Considerations of agreements and purchases less than $25,000. Consideration to approve the Hila County Fire Chiefs Association Mutual Aid Agreement. Consideration to approve the Cascading Poppies mural along the Silver King Stairs as part of this Arizona Trail Route donated by the City of Globe, by the IART Globe Organization. Consideration to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Hila County Division of Health, Arizona Health Zone, and Globe Public Library to facilitate programs at Globe Public Library presented by Hila County Division of Health, Arizona Health Zone, targeting low-income SNAP eligible residents for Globe and establish an annual calendar for the events. Consideration to approve change order number two to contract number GS-2020-0033 with the MMI tank in the amount of $1,343 for the Bonita Flats Booster Hydro-Nemetic Tank Project funded through account number 50-80-51248, Water Department Pipes and Fittings. Discussion and consideration to authorize moving forward the purchase of a CIP-approved item, Ditch Witch MV800 Vacuum Evacuator in the amount of $46,489. The funds are budgeted in account number 50-80-52000, Water Capital Outlay Equipment. And consideration to approve the Heart Fit Per Duty Annual Physical Agreement with the Globe Fire Department. Is there anybody from the public, the staff, or council that would like to remove any of these items for separate consideration?
Mayor, if there are no further questions, I'd like to accept the consent calendar.
Second. We have motion to second for approval of the consent agenda as read. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passed. Go to new business. First, we have consideration to possibly approve the transfer of general fund, admin contingency funds in the amount of $10,533.06 to account number 10-57-51275, Police Department Ammo and Equipment to procure Bola wraps for the Police Department. We have Chief Walters.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is another less lethal device for combating violent offenders. It's a new product that's out on the market. It's contested. We actually did a test run of it here. Vice Mayor Stapleton was gracious enough to volunteer for us. And there is video available if anybody wants to watch it.
I'd like to come.
So it works fairly well. We're trying out some different methods and some different technologies out there. We were fortunate enough, on this particular purchase, the amount total is $10,533. However, the League of Cities has offered a grant to reimburse us for 50% of the cost of that. So we're going to outfit our patrol vehicles with these items so they're available to officers on scene. Questions concerning?
Questions or comments?
So have you ordered the equipment yet or are you waiting?
Apparently right now, we just went to contract with it. It's in, I think, finances right now, but it's been approved. It's moving forward, so we'll have it in hand. When we get it in hand, there's some training packages for it. And so we'll come in and do a demo for Council if they so wish.
I'd like to present the Police Department with the training devices. All they're learning is to play with these machines. During my world travels, I acquired this. I don't know where I acquired it. But Paul said we were going to do some Bola. I figured, why not?
So this is the original. The technology's a little different. A little bit more compact, a little less aggressive. So, but if Vice Mayor wants me to demonstrate, we can demonstrate both methods. Thank you, Councilman Pastor. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I was able to witness the demonstration of the advanced Bola wrap. I don't know what the difference is at our risk pool board meeting a couple of months ago. It's amazing how it operates and it really brings down the atmosphere. It's loud. If the noise, if the sound doesn't get you, the wrap's going to get you. So I think it's a big investment. And the risk pool really, they really believe in it. And that's why they've offered that they will pay 50% of any cost of any of our contracted cities across Arizona for the cost of it.
Yeah, and this next generation is the one that we're purchasing now. The one that we demonstrated with Mike was the original generation. They've upgraded the cartridges, the firing mechanisms and stuff. So it's quite a bit more advanced already within eight months.
How about the bars?
No, they're still there.
So I might, don't take any blood from her.
We did need FD with Band-Aids, so it was good.
No, I think honestly, it's a really good addition to your department. So I appreciate your help and everything and achieving this. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your support. There's no further questions. I'll take my new toy.
Mayor, if there's another comment or question, I'd most like to approve the transfer of general fund admin contingency funds in the amount of $10,533.06 to account 105751275, Police Department Ammo and Equipment. Clear the 10 Bola wrap for the Globe Police Department.
Motion to second, and that'll be coming back to us, or is that the final on it? Because it's under new?
No, this is under new business, so unless we waive the rule, it will be coming back. But did you?
You want to add to yours? Motion to second to add waiving of the rules for this item. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any opposing? Motion passed. Item B, public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 878, a request to rezone the property located at 450 South Hill Street, aka Hill Street School, APN 208-02-432, to apply a planned area development overlay zoning district to the existing C3 Central Commercial Zoning District on a total of .79 acres of land. The pad proposes a maximum of 64 residential units, no onsite parking requirements, and reduces the minimum required front and street-side building setbacks. Case number Z-21-05. Shelley, can you read ordinance 878, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 878, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe amending the zoning ordinance of the city by amending the City of Globe zoning map to apply a planned area development overlay zoning district over the existing C3 Central Commercial Zoning District to allow multifamily land use for a maximum of 64 dwellings. No onsite parking requirements and reduced minimum building setbacks on a total of more or less .79 acres of land located at 450 South Hill Street, parcel number 20802432 in the City of Globe, County of Hila, State of Arizona. Would Council please with that reading?
Yes, Shelley. Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, I want to invite Dana, uh, to give us an explanation of the rezoning request, please.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council members, pleasure to be before you live and in person this evening. Uh, thanks to you for considering this agenda item. As the agenda read, this request is for, uh, to apply a planned area development overlay. That's basically a zoning overlay over the existing C three zone property, uh, of the Hill Street School. Um, and the purpose of that overlay is to allow the redevelopment of the Hill Street School to be adapted to single, uh, to residences and then construct a new single family, or I'm sorry, a new, uh, uh, three-story apartment building directly adjacent to and attached, um, to the building. And we'll get into greater detail here. Uh, so quickly, just to orient you to the property and existing zoning surrounding the site, you see it there. It's a triangle, uh, triangular shape. Um, this is the convergence of, uh, like, five different zoning districts right at this location. Uh, as we know, it's a kind of a critical location in, um, Globe's history. The convergence of, um, well, of a, a, access to the Hill Street School off of the Highway sixty. Uh, and the convergence of a lot of highway or, uh, Ash Street, commercial uses and activities, some residential you see to the north there and the R two, and then some properties that were zoned C, C two along Ash Street as well as neighborhood services. Uh, and then the majority of, of the downtown extending to this area or to that, close to the Ash Street or to Ash Street, uh, is zoned C three, which is our most intense commercial zoning designation. And, uh, for the most part, I believe all of these zoning districts have been in place probably since nineteen, we have a zoning map from nineteen seventy-three, and it generally looked like this at that time. Uh, here's the site in the center of this map. Just want to give you an idea of the surrounding, uh, land uses and, uh, features. Um, within about a two-block radius of the property, we have, uh, the downtown, obviously ultimately the downtown restaurant, uh, restaurants, but even closer, some restaurants along Ash Street and Hill Street. Uh, the senior center, American Legion, uh, there's a physical therapist directly across the street from the subject property. Uh, there's also a law office for legal services, um, a large grocery that you know of as Safeway down the street, um, as well as transit stops and a number of churches in this close vicinity. So it is a great location for someone that likes to live downtown and or somebody that might want to limit their, their use of an automobile. Uh, so again, the purpose of this, uh, planned area development zoning ordinance is, is primarily three, uh, modifications to our underlying C three designation. And what that is initially is to allow for multifamily use. Uh, currently, the C three zoning district allows residences multiple, uh, multifamily residential uses with an approved conditional use permit. Uh, coincidentally, we approved, I think, two, uh, residential or multifamily projects within the C three district last year, uh, uh, through the conditional use permit process before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And to date, neither of those properties have been converted or utilized for what that approval was for. So we were a little excited that we could address some of the limited housing or the, the big, the high demand for housing in the, in the community, uh, with, with approving those C U Ps, but they just, they still haven't developed. And I believe, uh, one might not develop at all. I think it's now used as a massage or a spa. Uh, the second purpose of the ordinance is to reduce the minimum building setback along Maple Avenue and Hill Street for the, the per, per, uh, portion of the project that would be new construction. Um, at currently, the Hill Street School is sitting right on a property line, and that's not uncommon for a lot of the historic buildings in, in downtown. Uh, between downtown and Hills, or and, uh, Ash on the south entrance there. Um, that's, you know, when, when the majority of this older area, historic area was developed, uh, we didn't have a lot of room for cars at the time and, and they would, or it might have been largely horse and buggy. So, uh, there is that character that's been established in the downtown that we have our downtown overlay district, uh, designed to preserve that because of that character, that close to lot line, that walkable, um, street appeal and sidewalk adjacency. Limited, uh, breaks for large expanses of parking and things like that, um, are intended to be preserved by that historic overlay. Creates, it establishes our character of why people like to walk in, in down, historic downtowns. Um, so for that reason, uh, this ordinance, uh, the applicant's proposing to locate that building within a couple of feet of the Maple, uh, frontage, uh, property line. And then finally, uh, they're also requesting no onsite parking, uh, requirements for the project. Uh, or actually, uh, no onsite parking, but then to utilize, uh, public, uh, surrounding, uh, right-of-way, uh, for parking. And then some other things have been entertained as well, which we'll get to. Here's a site plan of the layout. As you can see on the north, uh, or I'm sorry, the north would be to the left. Um, so the east Deveraux Street is proposed to be improved. Currently, it's a dead end and it provides access to the school, high school parking lot. And it's proposed to be redeveloped as, uh, you can see with perpendicular parking along this, uh, property frontage. Also shown is a proposed loading zone near the entrance of the building, uh, that entrance, excuse me, uh, would be located, the primary entrance would be located right around here near the loading sign. You can see with the red arrows, uh, there's an elevator that would be constructed as well within that portion. And then also a leasing office would be located, uh, right off of that. So the proposed addition would be the three-story new construction. You can see the property line, um, there to the north, and then the existing vacant school would be adapted for residents and, and, um, rehabilitated from its current state. Uh, that building has sat vacant for the past sixteen years and, um, really hasn't been maintained as well as the site. Uh, the site is very unique, and I think it's one of the few sites in the city that is actually, the entire site is wrapped by public right-of-way, city streets. Um, it's unique, you know, see that very often, but obviously it lends to, uh, a lot of on-street parking in that condition on, on that side of the street. And hence the, uh, request from the applicant to utilize that on-street parking as part of their, uh, parking requirements. Uh, additionally, uh, they've provided, uh, reflection area for public access to display the history of the school and do a, provide an educational opportunity there, uh, and then have significant open space in the center of that building to help enhance the corridor. As we mentioned before, this is a gateway, uh, to our downtown from the south. Um, so having that, uh, rehabilitated historic school building, uh, improved as well as, uh, landscape open space would provide, obviously, a large, uh, very warm appeal to entering, uh, from Hill Street on the south. And there's basic floor plates. I think it's the ground floor, um, and new construction shows the completed, uh, floor plans, uh, for one-bedroom studios or one-bedrooms. And then you see a mixture of the converted, uh, floor, uh, spaces, uh, for both studio or studios, one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. Uh, here's an elevation of the building and, uh, passing from Hill Street. Uh, this would be the school building at this location, this lower area is that, uh, single-story appendage, uh, that follows Hill Street, actually. Um, and then, uh, to the left, you see the new construction and that stair, the, uh, elevator column, uh, with that darker tone. Now, obviously, these aren't the final colors necessarily that would be reviewed, as well as the site plan you just looked at will be, um, developed in greater detail should the council wish to approve this, uh, and a site plan approval would be required. At that time, we would get into all those details of, um, the surveyed site plan, uh, if you will, elevations, how everything's working together, um, and then ultimately colors, building elevation, finishes, and so forth. Uh, the applicant has agreed to, um, comply with the city's recently adopted, uh, Historic Preservation Design Guidelines as well. Um, I think most of you may be aware, the city has, uh, drafted a conceptual boundary for the future expansion of the Historic Preservation Overlay District. And it includes this property as well as all the properties to the south and then, uh, or I'm sorry, to the, uh, west and then to the south across Highway, uh, sixty as well. Um, and that would be coming, uh, forward possibly later this year. Um, that had been contemplated. I think that, that map that we're looking at was developed initially with, with Chris Colley probably over three or four years ago. Um, Historic Preservation Advisory Committee agreed. This looks like a great direction. Let's, let's move that forward. So with that being said, in your staff reports, you notice that, uh, we do make reference to provisions of the Historic Preservation Overlay Zoning District. Uh, and how this proposed P A D, such as the, um, mixture of uses or having residential as well as, uh, reduced setbacks. Those are our, and reduced parking regulations are all, uh, opportunities that are currently exist, that currently exist in the Historic Overlay Zoning District. Um, so this isn't something that's, uh, what's being proposed, is it really way off base of what's been done before. And actually, if this were in the Historic Preservation Overlay District, much of this would probably actually be an administrative approval process. Uh, so anyway, so that is explaining the staff report. Um, so when we're looking at a zoning request like this, staff's obligation is to evaluate many things, but most importantly, my obligation is to look at how does this fit within the, the goals of the city? The general plan that's been established back in twenty fifteen, any specific plans or our downtown, uh, uh, downtown studies that have occurred over time? Um, so your staff report provides that analysis. There's a number of, uh, goals, strategies, and, uh, policies in those respective policy, adopted, council adopted policies that speak to historic downtown and the gateways, getting this location right here and Hill Street School in itself. And again, that, that detail is, is listed out in your staff report. I'd be happy to expand on any, uh, of those goals, strategies, or policies, if you'd like. Um, but I just summarized some of the higher level items that I found, uh, in reviewing those documents and our vision, the city's vision, uh, which is the need for new and updated housing. Again, this isn't anything new. Uh, we know it's been exacerbated over the years of, uh, pretty intense growth in the state of Arizona and new migration. So, um, obviously, twenty fifteen, that was a goal. That's probably a much more dire goal, uh, uh, goal of the city at this time, given that we've had a, not a lot of new housing. Uh, as a matter of fact, in the last ten years, I think we've permitted one house, about one new construction home each year. Not to say remodels and things like that didn't occur, uh, but there's been one new construction every year on average. Um, the only multifamily developments that have occurred in the last twelve years or fifteen years were, uh, one in the county, which is an affordable senior housing project out, or, uh, development out off of, uh, Sawaro and Skyline area. Um, that was built in two thousand and eight, I think. And then one within the city, which is over behind the Wendy's and gas station down below. And one thing you'll notice, that is the newest construction probably by, probably forty, those are the only multifamily projects I'm aware of that's been developed in the city. Um, those were developed fifteen years ago, and those are probably the most, uh, contemporary and, uh, developments in, in the city. Multifamily development, they're only multifamily developments, but, uh, definitely well-maintained. Had the opportunity to, uh, take a look at those. Um, but this proposal obviously would further expand or almost more than, uh, double the amount of units, uh, that are currently, uh, available to, uh, residents or, you know, from an affordable perspective or senior housing. Um, so yeah, this one development would double what we have currently available in new construction. Uh, the, uh, goals also identify the need for affordable housing, which we know, um, the need for rehabilitation and repurposing of historic structures, which just involves obviously the Hill Street School. Um, the, uh, again, you, there has not been, uh, you know, extreme amount of, of re, of, uh, rehabilitation of historic buildings in the city. There are, you know, you don't, we don't typically see a full-blown restoration of a building here. It's a piecemeal kind of moving forward. Now we want to do the facade or change colors, make some improvements on, on facades in the historic downtown or historic structures. Uh, but we really haven't seen a full-blown, um, rehabilitation of one, uh, as is proposed with this, uh, request. Um, we have a need for residences and population in and near the downtown. Obviously, having people near your downtown supports your downtown. It also gives them the opportunity to have very convenient goods and services within walking distance. So, uh, every city usually has a goal. The more people you can get near your downtown. Um, when you're in downtown, you want to run your upper levels because you want to maintain the retail spaces on the lower levels or mixture of uses like that. But residents in downtowns make them vibrant and active. And then finally, need for improvements at, uh, downtown gateways. Got a number of, uh, goals and strategies that identify both the railroad trestle, uh, as our north boundary and gateway to our, uh, historic downtown. And then obviously this intersection at Hill and, and Ash, um, for the gateway to, uh, from the south. Um, so having both of those gateways developed obviously attracts, uh, people's attention that, uh, that are commuting through or tourists possibly just cutting through, uh, the city. Uh, to that point, um, I just put together a couple of examples of what does a gateway mean. I know it's been discussed by councils in the past in the community, uh, at large, but, um, what other, some other communities have done are similar, uh, large monumental type of, uh, signage, wayfinding, um, art that attracts, catches someone's eye and attracts them off of making thoroughfare and brings them into our downtown to hopefully, um, spend money, uh, dine and, um, enjoy the open spaces. And there's a couple of other options. Doesn't necessarily be, need to be a, uh, crossing over the highway or over the street, um, but I understand that has been something that's been discussed previously. And on the left there, you see, I just, uh, a nice landscape combination. Um, that could be an opportunity, uh, at this intersection or on the, uh, subject property. Um, so on-street parking has been the single, um, broadest, most discussed issue, um, from residents, uh, particularly residents surrounding the property. Um, in our review, uh, we're identifying a handful of different ways that we could address that moving forward with the property, including, uh, the applicant proposed to construct, uh, parking on Deveraux. So we know there's a full right-of-way improvement or public street improvement. Uh, they would, uh, provide, uh, applicant would also promote alternative modes of transportation for residents. They know there's, you know, most of the residents would be senior and or on, uh, limited income possibly. So, uh, having a convenient location where they don't necessarily need a vehicle and walk to the goods and services they need, um, uh, is also, you got to take that into account while we're looking at all the different complexities of parking, uh, in an urban area. If surrounding businesses or residents experience parking problems, a city may post on-street parking limitations, particularly for, uh, the commercial uses. We'd like to see, continue to encourage the development of on the south or on the, uh, east side of Hill Street. Um, so, and we've all traveled and been to different places and seen very creative ways that parking is controlled, uh, in certain circumstances. So, uh, there's, there's a large toolbox of opportunities there. Also, city could develop a long-term plan for downtown parking, uh, and mass transit and alternative transportation practices, which we got to do at some point anyway, as you continue to grow. And the more compact you grow, which is the more sustainable, you know, is a more sustainable way to grow. Um, we need to take those into account to make sure we can grow sustainably in that way. So, uh, taking a big, broad look at what is the nature of our parking, what's available, uh, should happen, uh, at some point in the future as, uh, more development occurs. Uh, city to promote ridership and alternative forms of transportation in the area. Um, and then a handful of other opportunities. I know the applicant has been, uh, pursuing a number of different options as well and looking for additional off-site parking locations, and he can speak to that. Uh, so we're talking about parking and, uh, adjacent property impacts. Decide to be best to put together, um, a map to kind of go through, uh, the adjacent properties. I'll start here at the, um, southeast corner, yes, um, or at the southwest corner, I'm sorry, of, uh, Hill and Ash. Uh, that's a commercial site. Looks like a two, two-unit office space. Uh, as you can see, they have parking, uh, provided there. And they're so close to the intersection, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be allowed to have on-street parking at that location. they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be allowed to have on-street parking at that location. Moving to the next property, yellow and green and brown are all residential uses. I just had to distinguish who owns what. So all of that yellow area is owned by the same individual, or same company. There are four units that I'm aware of at that property, and as you can see, they have a large parking area to the rear of the site, and they utilize that. And I think that one time, they probably also took access to the, to the brown site that we're going to get to with four units, or after we discuss. The two-unit location is a duplex that was recently remodeled. That applicant wanted to make sure, currently, I think they have two tandem parking spaces available on their property, driveway on the property. Keep in mind, residences are required to have two parking spaces. Every resident generally is required to have two parking spaces off-street on their, on their property, outside of the downtown.
Did you say off-street?
Correct. Correct. And for the most part, all of these properties have that, with exception to this four-unit with the black asterisk. That's a beautiful, what might be Victorian, or maybe I'm missing that architectural elevation, but it's under restoration right now. That's individuals, the property's owned by a woman named Tina, who might be here this evening to speak. She does oppose the development across the street, but that would be the one part, property that does not have its own driveway or any other. My understanding is, her tenants utilize the property that's owned by Nerd Burger owners next door, and if you're out there, you might not even notice that, I think they just park on that property. You would assume it's their driveway, but it's not, apparently. It's a neighboring lot. So the white asterisks are the lots that we've received opposition for, to this request. Here is the Nerd Burger property. He owns these two parcels. I understand that restaurant was converted, I don't know how long ago, maybe over 10 or 15, 20 years ago, but some time ago. And by purchasing this property next door, they use that for parking. It hasn't been improved for parking. There still is a lot lying in between them, but whenever we convert a home to a business, we usually look for parking, or obviously that can be a problem. So if that were to happen with other homes, we have to look at that and make sure, how are we meeting this? Now, if it's an Historic Preservation Overlay District, we've got a lot more flexibility to work with them and find, figure out that solution that works. But that's the nature of parking for those lots. As you can see, there is one single-family lot in the back, in the rear of the adjacent Nerd Burger lot there. That individual has a couple parking spaces on his property as well, and then we'd need to maintain access from Hill Street to that lot. Obviously, then, there's also access to the rear of the Nerd Burger parcel as well, and you can see some of that open space and other vehicles that park back there. So I think if there ever really was a significant parking issue for Nerd Burger, I think there is definitely some ability to expand parking and organize the property in a way that could support probably more parking than what would be required for the lot. Moving to the north, single-family home, utilized. It has a large area in the front, looks like people have been parking, and then obviously they also have a driveway that circulates to the rear of the property for additional parking there. We have one, another single-family home that's for sale directly adjacent to that lot. They currently do not have, they blocked off or have a yard. However, the home is placed to the west, so if they ever did need parking where they came in, they have some space there to park. And it looks like it also would have, provide a similar access to the rear of the lot. Next to that, a conversion from a single-family home to a law firm, has plenty of onsite adequate parking. Next door to that would be a physical therapist who also has onsite adequate parking, and that, sort of that is a smaller office building. I'm not too sure what it's used for, but they do provide their own parking as, as well. Directly to the north of this property is Thema Hospice Business. They have, you can see the parking space is striped, and they do have additional area around the parking, like old gas canopy is what it looks like, additional parking to expand, but they do use that as outdoor seating, from what I understand. And then this is one large parcel, looks like a commercial, and it's assessed as both commercial and residential, so it's a mixed site. But it looks like a single-family home in the middle and a corner commercial building with parking in between, and it looks like they probably have at least two or three parking spaces in between those. And then to the east of the site, these two homes both have, you can see towards the rear of the fronting, maple-fronting lot there, they have a garage as well as, a double-car garage, I believe. If not, might be a very small double-car garage, but a driveway appears to be able to contain two vehicles. And same with the property directly, the green property I have marked there. And those are both single-family homes. Then we have the school parking lot, south of that. So, does anybody have any questions on this highlighted map, and we can always come back, but just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, thank you for your presentation here. I do have a question, and maybe you explained it, but I missed it. Following your path on the unit one that has the asterisk off of Deveraux right there, just to the south of that, you have a, like a green one unit. Is there parking available for that unit?
Yeah, that unit has a two-car driveway and a gate. I can't recall if it has a garage, it may have a garage. Both of those homes have, definitely, their two cars off-street.
Thank you.
All right. So public outreach and comment, as you know, it's all on YouTube and available for viewing, so hopefully we've had an opportunity to look at that. My quick calculations, looks like we've had probably 33 people in attendance, a handful are for two meetings that we've held. First, the Required Citizen Review Meeting that was held on January 10th, and then the first public hearing, it held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on, on January, sorry, January 10th, and then Planning and Zoning Commission was held on January 16th, I believe. Twelve of those people expressed opposition to the request. Three people expressed support for the proposal. Reasons for opposition has been generally consistent, no onsite parking, and the loss of off-street, or on-street parking that the, those residents at those homes that we just looked at, or those three residents that we identified on the last map, are concerned. Increasing crime, redeveloping the property apparently does instill some fears in people that there could be an increase of crime. Traffic safety, anytime you add people or another new development, there's always new traffic considerations. Fortunately, in this location, we have a T-intersection at Maple and Hill with the crosswalks, and then the signalized intersection at Hill and, and Ash. So really, from a traffic safety standpoint, this development would not dictate or generate a need for a traffic impact study, because we know those traffics that, you know, those traffic control devices have been improved. We, it would be very unlikely to see any, Deveraux's a dead-end street, right? Yes, certain times of the day, peak times when kids are leaving school or entering school, there's, there's traffic, but that's just a 10-minute period typically. And there's other mechanisms that you can utilize to control that traffic, if there is a concern or issue. Reasons for opposition continue with views into residences. So those three opposing properties were all concerned about the views from these new residential units onto the property. Now, obviously, whatever occurs on Hill Street, or with the redevelopment of Hill Street, you know, there are three-story windows on that building, and a lot of them. Once they're repaired, yeah, there would be, there'd be those. But when you look at the other properties, they all seem to have very protected windows in terms of curtains and shades and things like that. And finally, there's definitely a sentiment of opposition to affordable housing versus market rate housing. Keep in mind, we have not received, the city has not seen a market rate housing proposal for this property, or, I'm not, I have many others too. You're aware, we've got a subdivision that's being proposed down at Reyes Ridge, but outside of that, in my time here, and in the time I've consulted with the city years prior, I just haven't seen any type of new development. And then finally, this evening, you'll receive additional public comment. You open up the public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends, recommended the city council deny the zoning case on a 4-2 vote. I think they included some other information on that, on their deliberations and their motions. And then, so, at, after your deliberations and hearing from the public and other members of the city staff, the city council is open to motion to approve, approve with conditions or deny this request, and then we have some suggested language that you can fill in the blank. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have.
Questions or comments for Dana?
Dana, can you give me a definition of what multifamily is?
I believe our ordinance is four or more units.
Is there a limit on, on the number of people?
No, no, it's just attached, four or more units on a single lot. Doesn't even actually need to be attached.
Thank you, Dana. Next, I'd like to invite the applicant, Dan Crokey. I hope I said it right. Oh, you're gonna, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can use the one on the podium, that's just where people walk away from there.
Can anybody hear me? Great, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate the time and consideration to the project this evening. My name's Sally Schwinn, I am the Arizona Market President for Gorman &amp; Company. For a mission statement for, for Gorman, we work to revitalize communities through innovative housing partnerships. We specialize in downtown revitalization, the preservation of affordable housing, workforce housing, and adaptive reuse of significant historic buildings, just as we're doing with the Hill Street School. Our core purpose is to initiate strategies and implement solutions to revitalize communities and build strong neighborhoods. Since our inception in 1984, we have gained a tremendous amount of experience in the last 38 years in building affordable housing and, and community development, you know, experience in revitalization. Gorman has over 400 people with a wide variety of experience. We are based in Madison, Wisconsin. We have offices in Arizona, obviously, Colorado, Illinois, Florida, Georgia, Arkansas, Ohio, and we're opening an office in Oregon next month. We're vertically integrated, which means that we have development, architecture, general construction, property management, and all the compliance that goes along with all that work. We work closely with local governments and community groups to help communities meet their development, planning, economic, and social goals. We've been building in Arizona for the last 13 years. During that time, we have developed over 1,500 units. We currently have about 480 under construction, and we have over 2,000 units that are in the pipeline for pre-development right now throughout the state. We have a vast amount of experience in rural development in addition to urban development. One thing I wanted to touch, touch on tonight, which I haven't so much in the last two times that I've been, been here, is really talking about the difference between affordable housing, low-income housing, and subsidized housing. There seems to be some confusion that we've heard through some public comments, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that. We're really an affordable housing developer, and that's a very broad, broad definition. Basically, it's generally defined as housing where the occupant pays no more than 30% of their income on housing. So the rent for a home price that's affordable may vary from one household to the next. There's, everything's relative with respect to what is, what is affordable for folks. Nationally, there's more than one in seven households that are severely cost-burdened right now, meaning they're paying over half of their income for housing. So when we talk about affordability, it's, it's vast. We do build this affordable housing, and typically, what HUD, which is the Housing and Urban Development Council's affordable, is housing that is at or below 60% of area median income. A lot of the time, that's what the community's income is where we go and develop. We're able to develop this housing by using what are, what's called low-income housing tax credits, and that seems to throw folks off. They think that's only subsidized housing, which is not the case. This project is not a subsidized housing project. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that. We build subsidized housing projects, which are primarily Section 8 vouchers that are project-based to that project. In this case, we'll be using the low-income housing tax credit program, which has a great big window right now for expanding and bettering housing in rural communities. So this is a window that we haven't seen, at least in the last 10 years of my career in, in development. But currently, the federal and state governments who are allocating these type of credits and other funding are focused on rural areas in addition to the urban, but there's such a drastic need for the housing that their priority is to rural communities. So with that, just as a, as a broad base, the low-income housing tax credit gives investors a dollar-for-dollar reduction in their federal tax liability in exchange for providing financing to develop affordable rental housing. These investors are large pension companies, large banks, and, and other large institutions that provide the equity for these tax credits, so they're buying the tax credits so that they then put the equity into the projects. So there's a, a lot of different layers involved in this type of, of project. This infusion of capital allows us to build this housing and provide the, the rents at below market rates. So the financing of these projects using tax credits need eligibility requirements for at least 30 years in the state of Arizona. I've explained to everybody that there's 15-year compliance period, there's another 15 years years on top of that where the project must stay within the land use restriction of affordability that we put on when we get the financing. So once we, once we build this, Gorman will be your neighbor for a guaranteed 15 years in owning this project, managing this project, and being, being your neighbor. At the end of the 15 years, typically, we will either refinance and resubsidize a project, or the, or at that point, somebody else could come in and acquire the project, but it would have to stay affordable, and it would have to stay within the compliance restrictions that the state of Arizona requires. So there's that assurance that the project is not going to be built and flipped, it's not going to, to go into anybody's hands because the state has compliance regulations that must be abided by. So with that, and then as I said, the low-income housing tax, tax credits are issued through the Arizona Department of Housing. It's through a competitive process, and the criteria is on a scoring basis, whereas, as I said earlier, rural housing is a high priority this year. Lockability within downtowns, historic revitalization, and that type of, of format is, is very high-scoring. So we, again, are very excited about this opportunity, and it's, it's a great, great chance for this house, this Hill Street School to be finally revitalized and being brought back to life with, with financing that works, that can be infused here. Another question that we've gotten through some of the previous public hearings we've been to is, is what, what are the resident qualifications? So how do people qualify for this? As we've talked about, the focus and the target will be seniors, 55 and older, for at least 80% of the project. The, the property will be managed by Gorman &amp; Company Management Company, and will handle all the leasing, management, and maintenance of the property. The, the Lytech units, well, those folks will earn no more than 60% of the Hila County area median income. So I think it's important to recognize, it's, it's county area median income, it's not, you know, there's, there's nothing state, it's, it's based on each county is how it's all regulated. And those folks will be paying rent that is no more than 30% of their income. The federal leasing criteria that Gorman must follow for this is, we will be doing rent-to-income ratio checks, credit checks, criminal background checks, previous landlord checks, employment checks, employment history, and folks must be U.S. citizens. So it's really the same type of leasing criteria that you see in every other market-rate project. And once you see our finishes, we've got a couple pictures in the back that we brought this time of interiors as well. Our projects look just like market-rate projects as well. Our standard will be implemented with guards and security as well. We have a state-of-the-art camera system in all of our projects statewide and actually nationwide. So we've got camera systems, we have onsite maintenance, onsite management. So it's a very hands-on operation that we have. And again, as I've explained in previous meetings too, we believe strongly in our community outreach efforts. We appreciate all the comments we've received from the community. Obviously, we'll be talking about parking in more detail. We've been digging into more options there, which Dan will talk about after me, but we really plan to be here for the long haul and really invite everyone to participate in their opinions and want to be a longtime neighbor. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Clokey. He is our senior development project manager, and he'll talk a little bit more about the project.
I'm sorry, I just have one question, and I want to make sure I clearly understood. The state regulations require Gorman to manage and operate this facility for 15 years. After that, if Gorman decides to stay, or if another management team comes in, they're still bound by those state regulations, correct?
Correct. So it'll be a 13-year, what's called an extended use period past the 15 years. When we qualify for this, or when we apply for this financing, we will check a box that says that we plan to go with the extended use period, so it will automatically go for 30 years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Dan Clokey, as Sally said. Quick background, I've been working in Main Street communities and downtowns my entire career, 25 years. And so I sat in the seat that Linda sits in now, trying to attract developers, trying to attract investment into the communities that I worked in. And nothing was more exciting than trying to get people to reinvest in old historic buildings. Kind of a special place in my heart for those. I live in a 1926 house, and I serve, actually, as the chair of the Phoenix Historic Preservation Commission. So when we're walking through the school today, Sally and I, and you're trying to walk around the piles of bird poop and all that kind of stuff, and maneuver through, that kind of stuff gets me excited because it means that we can truly invest in a building that is clearly something very important to this community. It's served thousands of children through the ages, I'm sure, since it was built in 1921. And interestingly, I found a little radio show the other morning, and the one caller who called in went to kindergarten there in 1948. So clearly, this building has incredible importance to this community. And so for Gorman to be able to come in and invest in something that's this important is special to us. We've done this with eight different schools throughout the country, and you'll see some of the boards back there of the different places that we renovated. And there's nothing like being able to bring a community back to a place that holds a special place in their heart, that maybe had fallen on rough times, and allowing them to experience that building as it was, as they remember it from that time so many years ago. So this is really exciting for us, if you can't tell. But what I want to do is touch base on a few more things around the project itself. Dana talked about a lot of them, but I want to bring up a couple other things just to let you know what we're working on. Clearly, as Dana mentioned, this is a gateway parcel. This is the gateway to the southern sort of entrance into your downtown. Cars come in and see your town. This is sort of the first thing that they see. And right now, they're seeing, obviously, a building that's struggling. So we envision this as a beacon on the south side of the downtown, so that when people turn off ash onto Hill Street, they see this. They see that whole curved bank of windows instead of being busted and a mess. They see lights on in there, they see beautiful restored or historic-type windows in there. And what we want to do is make that sort of corner piece even more special. We know that there's folks who've been working on the gardens there for a whole bunch of years, trying to keep it looking nice, and it looks great. It looks particularly great when you're also looking at the building, which isn't looking so good. So we want to be able to enhance that. We want to add some sort of gateway piece and work with you all and the community to figure out what would be that. We've looked at the Drachman Report, they came out quite a few years ago in terms of trying to define some of those gateway pieces. Is it art? Is it signage for the historic downtown? What are the things that make Globe Globe and that are going to tell the visitors coming in that this is something special? For the school building itself, we had originally looked at 70 units. We think that now, at this point, we want to do 64 units. So we've reduced that number down. We heard people's concerns about parking, so one of the ways to do that is obviously to reduce the number of units that we have. So the historic school, originally, we had looked at 32 units, and now it's going to be 26. So six less units in the overall project. What this does is it opens up the gym. We were going to put units in the gym, so I don't know how many folks have been in there recently or not, but the gym is a pretty cool space with a little walking track around on raised walking track. So we envision that as being sort of the amenity center for not only the residents there, but I think there's possibilities for the broader community as well. And this is something that we'd want to talk with folks about as we progress down the predevelopment portion of this development. So with that, you'd have 26 units in the historic building, and then we would build 38 units immediately adjacent to it. So Dana, if you can go back to the site plan, and I don't know how, hopefully you have it in front of you, if we do see it there, great. So you can see where the existing vacant school is. It says 26 or 32 dwelling units. Sorry, Dana, that is an old thing. It's 26. We're not doing 32 units in there. And so the school itself is about 34,000 square feet of space. It's not space that's really easy to use. You have 10-foot-wide corridors, you have a whole gym, you have all these spaces that you can't necessarily do housing in real easily. And so we need to make sure that we have more units in this project. 26 is not enough to make all the numbers work. So what we're proposing then is this additional 38 units. And so if you look at the square footage, the school has 26 units in 34,000 square feet, and the new construction has 38 units in 31,000 square feet. It's much more efficient, it has corridors that aren't going to be 10 feet wide, they'll be more like five or six feet wide. And so you can use this space a lot more efficiently. That allows us, then, to create a project that has enough units, makes sense from a financing perspective, a construction perspective, and just an overall ability to manage it perspective. And so the way this would lay out then, and hopefully you can sort of see it there, is an elevator would connect the two buildings, and the corridors then would pass through by the elevator, and they would link in directly from the old building to the new building. So you could just pass from one building to the other through that space. So all told, it would be 64 units. Right now, in terms of parking, we have 39 street parking spaces defined. So 39 for 64 units is about .61 spaces per unit. The code talks about half a space per unit. Obviously, this is off-site, not onsite, so recognize the difference there, but we are above what the code is talking about in terms of its spirit of the use of, the need for parking. What we've been able to do in the last week is look at this a little bit more carefully. We need to work with the street department here to make sure that some possibilities could play out. So I don't want to promise it, but we're going to be talking with the street department about this. We believe we might be able to get some angled parking on Maple Street, which would allow for more parking spaces, maybe five or six more. It depends on if we think we can sort of semi-park on our land. It was a great suggestion by one of the planning commissioners, Commissioner Acevedo, I believe it was, who made the suggestion, so we looked at it. The other thing is on Hill Street, we were very conservative in where we striped off spots. You can actually fit two, maybe three more spots heading towards Ash on that. We just wanted to make sure there's a left-hand turn that goes onto Ash Street, so that you need an extra lane there. You can't park where that left-hand turn lane is, but you actually have a lot more space. And so we would work with the street transportation department here to see if we can get an additional six to eight spaces with what I just described. In addition, we have been, well, first, before I say this, the other part I think that's really important is the open space. We think it's, right now, that whole lot is just asphalt, and you have this gorgeous historic building surrounded by asphalt. We think, instead of parking, because we could fit five or six parking spaces there, it doesn't lay out very well, but we probably could squeeze them in there. We think this is a much better use of it, not only the residence, but as a walkable environment for all the residents in the community to come by, as opposed to seeing cars and asphalt. This is going to set off the historic building in a way that having a parking lot there just would not do. So we're excited about greening that up, treeing it up, making it a lot more approachable, seating areas and so forth, and again, sort of giving a sense of welcome to Globe from the south side, which you come in. So the other thing that I wanted to mention tonight, and again, I can't promise anything, but we have been, we've had initial discussions with the Globe Unified School District about the possibility of actually having teacher housing in this development. So we are looking at, because we know that it's an issue trying to attract new teachers, and housing is part of that concern of people not coming necessarily. So again, I do not want to promise anything. They have a board that has to work on that. We're having discussions with them. They've had an early conversation about having of the 64 units, maybe six to eight of them being for teachers. And those would be units that would be more workforce, a little bit higher rent than the other units in there. So we would, and obviously, there'd be teachers who'd be teaching probably across the street, and so we're hopeful that that might help some parking issues as well, potentially. But again, it's not a done deal. I don't want to put words in the mouth of the school board. This is something they're beginning to explore. So we think a combination of all these things, the reduction in units, adding some more, working with the transportation department to see if we can add some more on the street there, working with the school in terms of having some units and so forth. All of a sudden now, you're at, I mean, right now, it's 39 units for, 39 spaces for 64 units. We think we can get it up to probably 45, 46 spaces at least, which is like a .72, I think it is, or something of that, spaces per unit. The other thing to note is the units that we removed are two-bedroom units. So obviously, everyone's thinking, well, you're going to need more parking spaces for two-bedroom units. We removed six of those two-bedroom units. So it's not just units, but it's two-bedroom units that people might be concerned about having more of a parking need. So that has all been removed from the gym. So Dana touched on some of the concerns that came out during the meetings, specifically about the project. I think I've talked about parking. Crime. A vacant building attracts much more crime than people living in the building. And so I would call it crime when you're smashing out the windows of a building, when there's people living there that side of it. And so we think having people living there is going to be a lot more conducive to safety, quite honestly, and have more eyes on the sidewalk and people walking on the sidewalk. We chose this site not only because of the building, but because the people who live here will be able to enjoy amenities that you all have worked on over the years by walking to them. So you can walk to the Safeway, you can walk to the CVS, you can walk to the bank, you can walk to the senior center, you can walk to all these things that you all have been attracting to your town over the years. That's what makes that site attractive to us as well as the building itself. So all that said, we're really excited about this. This is a great, great development possibility, and we would be really excited to, and we're excited to hear what people's concerns are and what, and how we can begin to work with them on this. And I think that, I think that we have a real possibility here of creating something special that you all can put on brochures and on things that you want representing your town, because this is a building that, honestly, you're not going to find in most towns anywhere. You're never going to build anything like this again. You're never going to be able to afford to build something like this again. So we're excited that you would entertain the idea of us being a part of your community and rehabilitating this building and offering housing to your residents. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or can come up later and talk about things as well.
Go ahead, please. Thank you, Mayor. So back to the green area, you did mention that that would be available to general public as well?
I want to be careful about that. We don't want to create a situation where there's tons of hanging out where residents don't feel like they can partake in it. I think what that is, is an ongoing conversation with how do we, how do we use that space for community activities? How do we use that space as a true welcoming sort of space for people? Obviously, like any property, you have to sort of manage what happens there. And I know people have concerns about gatherings and crime and that kind of stuff, so we're going to have to have that conversation with you all as things move along. We're open to possibilities, for sure, and hope that it can be sort of an attractive place for people. The other thing I think we need to talk about is the gym. I think the gym offers opportunities for community gathering, for meetings and those kinds of things. You have more space, so if you wanted more residents that you need, you could have a city council meeting in the gym. I think it'd be kind of fun. So we partner with cities, counties, and nonprofits on almost every single project that we do. And so every project is this slow sort of iteration of, well, how can we work best together during the course of building? And this is no different. So we'd be happy to work with you all on those kinds of things.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, the project in Ogallis, is it on one of the boards back there? Okay, yes, there it is. I see it on the back. Thank you for that. Would you speak to the amenities that will be invested into this project? You had mentioned others, but I'd like you to speak to that.
Yeah, so we will definitely have an exercise room for the residents there. If we can, if we can make sure that it's safe, they will obviously have a walking path inside the gym, because it's already there. We will have community gathering spaces. We will have, sometimes we put in computer rooms. It just, it sort of depends on what the residents are going to be needing. We haven't puzzled through every single amenity, but we'd have those things that I just mentioned, as well as, like, the units will have laundry, washer and dryer. The, but part of this process is figuring out how we use that space. So that's an ongoing discussion, I think, that we would love to have with you all to try to figure that out. But we know it'll be an exercise room, and we know there'll be, I mean, you always have a basic maintenance room, a leasing office, those kinds of things. But, you know, if it's, we have all this space, we know we'll be able to put together a room, there'll be some sort of game room for the residents, some sort of gathering space for the residents that are there, but out of a blank canvas right now, so we just have to figure out how to best use that space, the remaining space.
Okay. I have a couple more comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the time, sir. Dana, at the time of the approvals for the project behind Wendy's, I was on that Planning and Zoning Commission at that time, and just as a point of history, I do like history. Residents surrounding the area were up in arms about that particular project, and they made it known to P&amp;Z as well as the council. There was a lot of fear of the same There was a lot of fear of the same kinds of items that I've listened to in the last two presentations were made at that time, and a few more drastic comments as well. But, the outcome was successful. P&amp;Z approved it, city council at that time approved it, and here we are 15 or 20 years later, and we have a revenue producer for the city. It's well-run, they had the same kind of tax credit incentives to put that in place, to build it, and then to manage it for, I believe, minimum 15 years, if not more. And, since that time, I have listened with my ear to the ground for any comments against that particular apartment complex. And to date, I have not heard one. And it was a courageous decision, and it is a revenue producer for the city. And, again, a company that had experience in putting in those kinds of installations and complexes around the West. So, history's kind of, we're in a deja vu moment. History's repeating itself. It was a success story, and both P&amp;Z and council at that time were courageous in putting that in. So the proof is in the pudding, so when I see another one come to town, yes, I'm encouraged about that. So that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Just one clarification question on the laundry. Each unit has its own laundry room? You won't have a big laundry, laundromat in there? It'll, each unit will have their own?
Each unit in the new construction, we're trying to puzzle through how we do that in, in the old building, just because systems are more difficult there. So if we, if we couldn't do it in that, then we would have some sort of central area in the, in the Hill Street School building to have laundry. In some ways, I kind of like laundry areas. If you set them up in a way that there's place for people to play games and hang out and be with their neighbors. And so, we're going to have to puzzle through that too, in terms of what's best for the people living there. But for sure, in the new construction, we build everything in new construction with, with washers and dryers, and not just the hookups, but the actual washer and dryer too, so that people have that. That's part of our application for the funding.
Thank you, Dan.
Before I open the public meeting, I just want to go through some, some, some of the ground rules, just so we keep it moving smoothly. You won't have to fill out a speaker card if you want to speak. What we ask is that you would like, if you want to speak, you'll have to speak at the podium, but you can line up on the wall on this side a, as a speaker. When speaking, make sure that you're near the microphone. We have a lot of people that are online right now viewing this, and when you step away from the mic, they cannot hear it. If you choose to walk away from the podium to speak, please take the portable mic that's, that's next to the podium with you, so people can hear you. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. And I ask out of respect that when you come up to speak, that any comments or questions are referred to the council. We're the ones reviewing this, this rezoning, and not to the applicants themselves. This is a decision council needs to make, so please address all comments to the council. And in respect of time, I'm not saying limit your comments, but be conscientious about repeat comments or complaints, so, so we have enough people to speak on the subject. I think that was all something to make sure that we covered. You know, we saw that, we had the opportunity to see in both public hearings, and we learned from it, where, where you're watching it online and, and some, a lot of the comments you can't hear, because people get away from the mic. So please, please do that. So.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the only other one, Mr. Mayor, we talked about was, comments are not relevant to the topic. We make sure that the comments relate to the, the project and the,
On subject.
Agenda, and, and don't drift. We had some, some drifting comments last time.
Okay, so, and make sure if you came in late, or you came in early, there's a sign-in sheet. We need your name and your address on those, on those sheets for the public hearing, so we can file those with this public hearing. So at this point, I will open the public hearing, and I will invite speakers to the podium that wish to speak. Again, name and address at the podium if you wish to speak after them. You could just line up on the wall. You do not need to fill out any speaker card at this time.
Good evening, council. I'm Ken Bernstein, longtime resident of Globe, born here, 1100 Monroe Street, raised in Miami. Parents born here, who've been here for a long, long time, since early 1900s. You know, the Hill Street School is a pretty cool building, broken windows or whatever, you know? I have trouble with seeing this thing turn into a big apartment building to the side of it. I mean, we need the housing here, I understand that, you know? But this big three-story thing at the end of it there, I don't know. It's, it's got me kind of puzzled with the, with the affordable housing, affordable housing, unaffordable housing, I don't know the difference, really. It's one of them you just can't afford, right? Is that what that means? But, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, we have properties on South Broad Street. We just went through this crime rate here at the end of the last year, very end, beginning of this year. And it costs a lot, lot of money to take care of our security. And we have people that aren't working, or I don't know how it's really going to work with the residents there. You know, is it going to bring more people that don't have jobs? Is the housing going to get paid for, for them? Is it going to, is it going to cause us more problems? That's my concern. And the other concern is parking. I mean, there's just not only residents that live there, but you're going to have visitors, and people are going to visit them. And if there was really a concern, and they were going to solve this problem of fixing the parking, you know, why don't they build a two- or three-story parking garage above the Globe High School parking lot there now? I mean, Globe's going to have this problem with parking. You know what I mean, downtown on busy days? There is hardly any parking downtown, you know? It's got to be addressed somewhere, someplace, somehow. Anyway, those are my comments. I'm opposed to it, and, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers that would like to address the council?
Mr. Mayor, council member. My name is Tony Manfredi, site 2944 Upper Hills Drive. Lived in Arizona for 50 years, moved here to Globe a couple of years ago. And I see projects like this. One thing about Globe is it's for SAMA. That historic preservation part of what it has to offer. But what I have noticed is that we're kind of a, we're at a standstill here. And I see a lot of projects, a lot of old buildings with so much potential, so much to bring to the city, so much to offer to businesses, to the residents. And I see something like this, and a developer wanting to come in, I'm all for support. I understand there's some opposition with things like, I suppose, the parking and the extra traffic. I don't think these are things that can't be worked through. As far as the crime, when I look at that old school, it's dark, it's pretty dismal. It's dilapidated. And if we can bring new life to it, I think it's, it's a plus for everybody, I really do. For the businesses, for the street traffic, for the corridor there, the housing. So I just wanted to get up and say, I'm in support for it. You know, we have an opportunity to either take a step forward or two backwards, and we don't want to be a city or town that is against or not friendly towards development. And we're seeing that across the country, where lack of housing, lack of market, people trying to get out of the bigger cities, trying to move on to the smaller suburbs and rural towns, raise their families, bring their kids, so forth. I, I think it's a plus. I think, we don't want to be known as a city that's against that, and it's pretty easy. I, I know we had developers come in here with, with other projects that we had opposition with, and I think after a while, we get stigmatized with that. As a town, that's just not willing to move forward. So, I support the project. I think it's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Dalen Law. I'm at 9364 South Six Shooter. But we do own the home right on the corner of Devereaux and Maple that was vacant for 15 years. We put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into that to get it. It was, it's an old craftsman home, it's beautiful now. And I just, I have a hard time envisioning this project where we, we drop in 65 units into that little, less than an acre area and think it's not going to be a problem with, you know, 50 cars, 60 cars, more cars? I don't know. My other question, and, and I'm assuming they've done the research, but on Devereaux, it's 48 feet wide, you take out five feet for the sidewalk, 15 four perpendicular parking, eight feet on the other side for parallel parking, is there enough legal right-of-way still? Maybe that's been done, but I would, I would ask that that be looked at to make sure that there is enough of a right-of-way there for, not a right-of-way, but for access. Because that's going to be crazy, if you've got 70 elderly people pulling in and out of there, and high school kids coming in and out of there on a 20-foot, two-way road. I just, that's a concern I have. The comment about the project behind Wendy's, I think there's a big difference in that there was plenty of parking built into that project. The, the biggest question on this one is parking. There was not an issue of parking on that other project. So, I agree, it's a beautiful project. I wish there were a way that we could do the project and have parking, do underground parking somehow, and still have the number of units to make it feasible. And, and I, I admire you two, can sit here and smile and take a lot of, a lot of grief though, but I, I oppose the project, but I respect you two very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Before we open it up to phone or email?
My name is Sarah Bernstein. I live at, pardon? My name is Sarah Bernstein. I live at 10165 South Ice House Canyon Road. And I'm a local business owner and have been involved with things in the downtown for probably about 27 years. I, I'm all for people positively impacting our community and breathing life and giving it viability, but I'm not convinced that this is the proper use for this space. Currently, we have a 17-year-old daughter that attends Globe High School, and I have concerns. I've been to, I believe, the last three meetings, and part of it is, the general focus is for senior living, but it's an 80/20 split, the 20% being, of course, opening it up to HUD. I have concerns when, I think somebody did the math, the previous meeting, for people to be able to qualify for this in Hila County, they would have to make about $23,000 a year. And if they made more than that, then they probably would not qualify to be a resident there. I'm, I, I guess part of it for me is, is low-income housing a goal as far as your legacy being on this council? It was very interesting, a Realtor brought up a, a pretty, I think, an important point, maybe it was the last meeting, that we have a lot of low-income housing in the Globe Miami area, but what we're lacking is more middle-of-the-road housing and higher-end housing. In my time, whether it's been serving on school boards, being involved with the hospital, different associations in the community, one of the issues that we've been faced with over time is having, having housing that would be attractive to professionals, giving them a reason to want to move their families here. To me, considering this project, even if we drop the numbers down to 64 units, now some of, six of the units with two bedrooms have been removed, how many people that are professional people are really going to want to move here and be able to have, what is it, .61 parking space for, for the vehicle? I mean, they're going to park two-thirds of their car? I'm just, I, I realize that everybody needs a place to go, but I'm not sure that this is the best fit for the neighborhood. Most of all, for me, it also comes back to safety of our children. People have been at Globe High School for over 100 years. Are part of being a teenager, learning how to drive, some of them have jobs, being community members. This is all part of practicing adulting. To me, just saying that Devereaux is a dead-end street and it doesn't mean anything, I'm not quite sure I buy into that. That's a gateway to our children's education and to how they're going to fit into this community with their driving skills or otherwise. I also have concerns, if you decide whether it's a general laundry room or you put Jack and Jill laundry facilities in each room. We have a very antiquated sewer system in this town. If you were to put 64 units with washers and dryers, and toilets, and showers, and bathtubs, and kitchen sinks, I think it's going to be an amazing strain on the infrastructure, which is already facing challenges in the downtown. As far as people talk about public transport or proximity to CVS or to Safeway, I've not noticed in these drawings any accommodation for handicap parking. I look at these drawings, I question the ability to do diagonal parking on Maple Street. Granted, I'm no architect. As far as the backside that would share the entrance with the high school, I really would find it maybe difficult to access loading in the way that it's drawn on the diagram. I find it interesting that the first part of this presentation, a lot of concern for residents who had already been here, some for a decade, some for multiple decades. We're giving a lot of questions as how they're going to park their cars, what they're going to do with their existing businesses. We're putting a lot of strain and demand on them, yet they've been paying taxes, they're part of this neighborhood, they're part of this community, and it seems like we just kind of accept that .61 or .50 car per resident is going to fly with a project of this magnitude. It's kind of interesting to me. I, I am also concerned with one elevator, and I've brought this up all three times that I've spoken. Even if we drop it down to 64, apparently according to the drawings, the elevator is to be put between the two buildings. If 80% of the clientele is senior, then what if we were to have a fire? Certainly, Mr. Gamaros, you can relate to this. I mean, you've spent your life in firefighting. To me, if we have senior residents, and I will state and clarify this, I am a senior citizen, just in case anybody wonders, so, I mean, I do, I do, I would meet this criteria. For some people, there, I, I think there would be concerns maybe for mobility, and how are we going to get all of these people out of this building if we have a concern? If there's only one elevator? I also didn't notice any accommodations for trash receptacles. That's a pretty big deal. Even an average business in the community might require a small roll-off, not a full roll-off dumpster, but a dumpster. I'm not seeing in any of this planning how we're going to accommodate for the trash for the residents who live there. I mean, I could, certainly, I've got, obviously, a lot of concerns. I feel for the neighbors as far as the height of this building, perhaps blocking views that they already have. I suggested two meetings ago that I would love absolutely nothing more than to see a quality versus a quantity project. Instead of utilizing this building and maxing out with 64 units, I would love nothing more than to, for somebody to put the money up, to buy the building, to create maybe five or six condos where the proposed second building is going. Why don't you build a parking structure, which would also maybe allow for... Why don't you build a parking structure, which would also maybe allow for storage for the residents? You could do a garden level on the second story, you could have a community level. And instead of just being something where we're going to be dealing with a low-income housing situation, actually give something that's going to elevate this community. I also have concerns with the type of clientele who would live there. If you're dealing with senior citizens that have needs, I know, for example, I'm certain it's fairly safe to say that the Fire and Police Department often gets called out to senior homes, seniors' homes when they might have concerns, or perhaps someone has fallen, or whatever have you. If we have the twenty percent that is the HUD component, I'm concerned because now we have a group of people that really can't make more than twenty-three thousand dollars. That concerns me with a group of people who may bring an entire family, that's not very much to live on, and you are right next to a high school parking lot. I'm sorry, but being the mother of a seventeen-year-old daughter, that raises a red flag for me. Once again, water use, not only just as far as our sewer, but having sixty-four units, it's not sixty-four people. It could be sixty-four couples, it could also be families. It could turn into a hundred-and-twenty-some, it could turn into a hundred-and-fifty. As we move forward, whether it was mentioned, the Reyes project, people have mentioned things out by the drive-in, I think water issues are going to be issues moving forward for our community. I'm also curious about why it is that we feel that we don't really need to do a traffic study. I mean, I personally feel that for myself, I don't necessarily like to drive that road at three o'clock in the afternoon. And certainly, if you drop off children to school at that hour, I mean, there are a lot of things to consider. I think what we have in Globe is a glut of affordable housing. And once again, for myself, I think it's the mid-to-higher end is really what we need to capitalize on. I guess another part that I want to bring up as well is that, I mean, I think it's interesting that this group wants to invest in this community. But I posed a question a couple meetings ago, and I asked, do they hold title to this property? The Gorman Company, to my knowledge, maybe they've changed their status from last time, but they do not hold title to this property. This is all, this project is contingent upon your ability to change the zoning to meet their needs. Now, if they've done hundreds or thousands of residents over the country, I think they said they had thirty-eight years of experience. They have four hundred people that work, based in Madison, Wisconsin. They have two thousand units right now in the pipeline for development in the state, and the list goes on. I would think that this company would have enough money on their own to make the investment and acquire the property. I think they're asking for us to invest in them in some way, more than they're asking to invest in us. So, and once again, too, I guess I'm a little concerned with, it's interesting to me how so much attention is put on shaping the people who have been there for decades in that neighborhood versus reasonable accommodations by people who, at this point, are still dealing with a pie-in-the-sky project. For myself, had this been a quality versus quantity project, I would be very happy to get behind this. But from what I have seen and what I, the concerns that I have, I have to say that I myself am opposed to this. And I hope that you will be also. And I hope that you will choose a better legacy to be what you leave behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one comment. You brought a lot of different subjects up, and obviously, we'll have those experts answered, like our Public Works, our police chief. But as far as emergency in a fire, in an apartment complex or motel, you're taught not to use the elevator. You don't want to lower yourself down into a floor of fire. There will be exiting that will be required at different areas. You use a stairway when you exit a multi-story building, not an elevator. So, it is not an issue as far as crowding an elevator.
I'll just ask you this question, Mr. Gamaros, in your line of work. Is it most common that people who are having seniors as a target market use a one-story building versus a multi-story building for potential safety concerns down the line? I mean, I know you've spent a lot of time in firefighting. And it seems to me, even when Kenneth's father was in a facility, when he got to that point, it was one level. I mean, I think one level tends to be, I don't know, more common than multi-leveled buildings for seniors.
And it could be. It just depends. I guess you would prioritize, and that'd be up to the company, prioritize the people that needed to be on the bottom floor. That's not for me to say, but yeah, maybe it is. But my mom was ninety-six years old. She lived in a two-story house and still got up at ninety-six years old, up and down a stairway. So, every situation is different. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any online? If you want to start with those, shall we? It'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment from Josh and Megan Crawford, and from the Driftin' Saloon, and they would like you to know. This comment is from Callie and Stephen Teas, and they also support the history of Council to know. I have a comment from Evelyn Ockit. She speaks on behalf of parents of Juan Carlos children who attend Globe High School, and they are opposed to the project. Kristy Cothran would like Council to know that the Hill Street School project is important for Globe. It keeps a historic building in use and adds much-needed housing. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anything on online, Paul?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
So, at this point, we have no more comments from the public. I'm going to close the public hearing so we can go to staff presentation to answer some questions, and then council comments also.
Hang on, or Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, hang on one second. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, last call for comments. So, at this point, I'm going to close the hearing. And I'd like to invite Gary up for comments.
Members of Council, so a couple of things. Infrastructure. We have an eight-inch sewer main that runs in front of this property that dumped into a twelve-inch sewer main. So, we have plenty of capacity for this development in this area. We also have a six-inch water main that doesn't seem like a whole lot, except that through this area, it's fed in three different directions, which gives us a lot more capacity, as you know, Freddie. And so, infrastructure as far as utilities, I don't think we have an issue with. I do, I am concerned about the parking, but we do meet minimum standards. And I think in the timeframe that we're talking about, that we can develop more parking in this area by restriping the streets and by getting some on-street parking. And as long as it's not on-site, I think we can develop in this area. And maybe even make things a lot better for the business owners in this area as well. The only thing that, just to correct, the intersection, can you pull the map up again? So, the intersection down here, we can't park all the way to Maple Street. We have to leave a site there, so we have to lay back a little bit. So, we might lose one parking place in that area. Because I don't want to permit cars to go all the way up where we can't see past them. So, we probably lose one. We probably can pick up a lot more going down Maple Street. And by doing something kind of ingenious, there was a right-of-way issue, I forgot, was it you or us together? It's a sixty-foot right-of-way on Deveraux. It isn't utilized quite well, but we could move things around to where the center of the road was, not exactly the center of the road, and make some of the parking work in that area. You know, I'm opposed, but I'm opposed to vacant buildings, and I'm opposed to not having development come into the city. So, I think that everything here is doable, and I'd be glad to answer Council's questions.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jerry, what are you saying you're opposed to?
Vacant buildings.
Oh, but you, okay.
And I'm opposed to not, I did say that. I oppose the vacant buildings, and I'm opposed to not welcoming development into the city. So, that's my only opposition. I think this can be done. I looked at the plans, I went out today and looked at the site. I believe that there's more parking spaces out there than what you guys referred to. So, I believe it's up around fifty without doing anything.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jerry, can you talk about the traffic study? That was the only thing, I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, the, there was a TI study done on the intersection when I was with ADOT. And we actually converted the traffic signal over to video detection rather than magnetic detection. So, what that basically means is it accounts for the extra cars that would be in that area and changes the light at a different interval. So, the video detection is on that light is actually four ways. So, it's all four different directions. So, I can remember tearing those loops out. Yeah, is that what you wanted me to do?
Yeah, no, that's, that, thank you.
There really is no TI. Even at Maple Street, there's no real TI that's needed there. They have a clear sight view, as long as we don't impede that corner. And there's, there's no real way to, I mean, you're not going to add more cars to the mix other than there's a rush during the school, and we'd have to figure that out. But I don't see any issues here. I think there's problems that we're going to have to work out. I just think that we can do that. That's just my opinion.
Yes, you can keep pushing.
Jerry, on Hill Street, right there, the South Hill Street, where they have the proposed parking, and it stops in front of the old vacant school now. Do we not have four or five more parking spots currently right there?
Yeah, there we do. And, you know, most of these streets have parking on the opposite sides, too. So, I mean, we haven't even accounted for those. We just accounted for the ones around the square, around the property itself. But the ones on the opposite side of the street, we haven't even accounted for those. So, I think you're going to get up more above that one face per unit, you know, if you account for everything out there. But, and then I think there's also, you know, I used to run the Cobra Valley Transit, so I think there's also a room for a bus stop here, too, as well. So, you know, especially if we made one on Deveraux where a bus could come in and pick people up. I think that's ideal. I'm sure Cobra Valley wouldn't be opposed to that, since they have bus stops up and down that area. Anything else?
Mike?
Were you involved with the hot light?
I was.
Okay, can you explain, you know?
So, basically, it's a way for pedestrians to get across safely and to stop, you know, stop the cars. And it's also, is more frequented when school lets out and when kids come in. So, it was Steve Stratton actually set that up through the Transportation Board, and we brought it in. It was actually turned down at one point when I was in ADOT, and then Steve brought it back in, which was a good thing.
And it cut down the number of potential accidents that we had there at the high school crossing, because that's...
Well, it not only cut down the accidents, but it cut down the pedestrians from jaywalking, too. You know, because they have a clear way across that was safe, they utilized that. They were, they would just run across the road. Nobody was going all the way down to the intersection and crossing.
Okay. Mayor?
Ariano, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerry and Paul, I do see a proposed trash recycle area at the extreme south end of Deveraux. I remember walking the property the other day, and that was discussed at that area. So, it's doable in that particular location. Anything else?
Anybody else want to question, comment for Jerry?
Yep.
Maybe if you need to speak, if you want to speak, you need to, well, to the mic.
Come up to the mic.
So, he said the right-of-way on Deveraux is sixty feet. I measured it today. The road is only forty-eight feet. So, a sixty-foot right-of-way would go into my lot.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Dana, I think you answered it before. Do you want to tackle this one?
I do, Mayor. This is a good example, and that's correct. This is about forty-eight feet to where the sidewalk, and some improvement here. So, what we have at Deveraux, if you remember back to the site plan, there's a loading area shown right in this section that maybe that gets expanded. But right now, you're not allowed to park within thirty feet of an intersection. Areas typical traffic-clear area, as well as the site triangle. So, that puts us back around that driveway, or not quite, actually. It's probably in this area. Then we have a two-car, the two driveways next to each other, so we won't be able to parallel park there either. So, that area would just remain, and there wouldn't be parallel parking right there, potentially because of the limitations of blocking your existing access, your neighbor's access in that other area. So, it is something that we would have to look at in detail. I believe we finally received a survey recently, and I don't know if it covers across the street, but we'll work through that. But there is a section through here that we know we can't block or have parking backing into. It's just one of those constraints we need to work around. Like I said, they've got these parking spaces. We need to make sure we don't block those drive-by. It is sixty feet. The, our historic construction was a little off in survey, or our surveys were off from our historic construction. One of the two happened, and that's not uncommon. That's why we will take much more time to look at detailed plans, work through it.
You say there is a sixty-foot easement. Does that mean you have the right to go into my yard if you need to, or?
No, right, well, Jerry, Jerry, can you get to the mic so they can hear you?
Sixty-foot right-of-way means the city owns sixty feet through there.
So, your trees...
But that doesn't mean it's on your side.
Right. We like...
But I don't think it's in the building. We would have to have a survey.
Yeah, there's some improvement. Looks like your house is probably right on the property line, actually. Your yard's sitting in the city right-of-way.
Thank you for your question.
The town's been here quite a while.
And Jerry, just for the record, your full name and title for the city?
Jerry Barnes. I'm the city engineer. Registered to the... I'm the regi- registered civilian engineer.
Former A.D.O.T. district engineer.
That too. I, I couldn't hold the job, I held a...
We'll talk about Indiana.
So, uh, anything else, Council?
Thank you, Jerry. I wanna invite Chief Walters up to speak a little bit on the crime, uh, subject.
You be Mayor, Council? Dale Walters, Chief of Police, I pretty much live at one fifty north. There's been several things that were brought up here. So, a couple of things, I came to Globe for a reason. Um, I love this community. Uh, I've invested a lot of money in trying to build a house out in Copper Hills, I'm still investing money. Uh, so I'm sold on it. Uh, one of the things I, I love about it, it's the historic aspect of it. And I, I actually looked at Hill Street School when we first moved here, uh, but the owner of it wanted a little bit too much money for me. So, the underlying issue here is, it is a beacon for crime in the state that it sits right now. And I understand the concern that, uh, some residents brought up concerning crime, uh, here recently. Uh, there, there was some mention in the last meeting of crime, um, in the area, which was incorrectly stated. And I had a discussion with a gentleman that brought it up, uh, it was inaccurate information. Uh, we have had a couple of individuals that are Globe residents, longtime Globe residents, that have a substance abuse issue, that have been, uh, committing some burglaries, and we've arrested them several times, and they'll keep going through the criminal justice system. But when this project was first brought to me, um, and there was questions concerning traffic incidents and things like that, and crime, we did about a five-year study, uh, historic on crime, and it's just not there. And it's been my experience, and so, for those of you that don't know me, I've been a police officer for well over thirty years. I know I'm looking pretty young, but I, I think I find myself in that senior citizen category right now. So, I've been doing this a long time, and one of the things that I have found, um, particularly in Chandler, and whether, and we have, everybody knows, we have several retirement communities in Chandler where I worked for, uh, for twenty-plus years, that are multi-story. This is a common thing. Uh, the key factor of them is, is when they're built, they're built with safety in mind, with modern-day, uh, uh, requirements that meet safety standards. Uh, a lot of the issues that we have in this community is, a lot of the, uh, the buildings that we have were built, although they're beautiful, but they were truly built a hundred years ago, and they don't have the standards that they, that we do today. They didn't have the sprinkler system, the wider hallways, the exit plans, and things like that. So, all those things are taken into consideration. The other thing, it would be my argument as the Chief of Police, that you would actually see a reduction in bad behavior in that area if we actually put people in that building, and we made it a high-quality residential area. And then, as far as, and, and I'm, I'm kinda like some of the citizens here, maybe the presenters can kinda explain it. I understand, um, low-income housing and stuff like that. I've dealt with project housing through my career, I've dealt with, uh, all sorts of different housing out there, whether it's high-end or low-end, and we've actually had less problems in some of the project housing, because one of the things the city did, and the city required, is crime-free multi-housing, meaning that you have to stay, you cannot live there, or you can't have people that are known criminals come visit you, and you can't commit a crime while you're there, or you will lose that subsidy of being able to live there. And that simple rule change actually did more to fight crime, uh, in my prior city than any other single thing that law enforcement did. Uh, because people, I mean, they wouldn't let their little out-of-control relatives come over and stay, because they would lose their housing. It's my understanding, and, and I can be corrected, but this facility would be crime-free multi-housing, where they have to hit a certain standard. So, having that entrance into our downtown, maintain the historical integrity of that building and what it means, I look at that building and I think of what it means to this community, the same way that I, I've listened to what the, the city pool means to the community over the last year. Uh, it's a big part of the gateway into it. I think it would go a long way, uh, to improve crime issues within the area. Uh, are there some challenges with it? Yeah, I think parking is probably a challenge. If I owned one of the businesses across the street, I would be really ecstatic about it, but I'd also be concerned about certain things. If I owned a house on the other side, and I invested a lot of money in fixing up a historical house, I would be concerned about that. But I think the overall good outweighs that, and we've got time to work through some of those other issues. And so, please, I, I do not, it's my professional opinion, I do not think crime is gonna be a negative with putting it there. I can't predict the future, I mean, I, you know, I, there could be some off-the-wall individual that happens to sneak underneath the wire and get in there, but the reality of it is, I think it's gonna be a really positive thing for crime in the area down there. Traffic, look, I don't care what high school you go to, when high school starts, when they break for lunch, and when they get over, there's about a fifteen or twenty-minute span there that traffic's nuts. Uh, you have a lot of young drivers that, and it, and it just is what it is. But we work with it, and if we identify issues, we can come up with solutions. We have a great rapport with the s- the school, we have a great rapport with Public Works, and we'll work with anybody to try to make it better. But I think there's some solutions here to some of these underlying, uh, concerns, uh, but crime should not be one, from my perspective, and, and it's just mine, um, that I would be overly concerned about. I think this would actually be a positive, uh, on that aspect for the community. Question, something, Mike?
Chief, uh, what's the crime rate at, at the Madera Peak Vista Apartments complex? Is it...
It, it, it's, it's extremely low. Uh, I mean, we now, every now and then, we have issues and stuff there, disturbances and stuff, but for the most part, it's extremely low. There's a false sense of crime in Globe, because when you look at crime rates, it's based off your population. And I speak to this because I've been talking to council about it for the last three years. If you look at our crime rate, you need to look at service population, because Globe annexed all the retail space. We have Walmart and, and that all the way through, but we didn't annex the housing, so we didn't get the population. So, when you look at the crime rate, if you don't compare it to the actual service population that we truly serve, uh, it looks higher than average. But if you break it down to what we actually serve, we're right there in the median for the state. Um, and you have to look at it that way. Do we have highlighted stuff every now and then? Absolutely, we've had some pretty phenomenal things happen since I've been here. Uh, but we've seen that steadily trend down. Uh, as we improve our policing, as we improve the education of the community, as we do simple things like putting the str- the speed signs that flash at you if you're speeding out on, on sixty, all those things have helped us as we go, and we're gonna continue doing those things. Uh, we're working on increasing the amount of police officers that are in the community, things like that. We have partnered with the school and put an officer in the school. We've partnered with, uh, the state troopers, and we have an officer assigned to the state gang task force. All these things are helping us as we, as we move forward. It took a long time to get to the place it was at when I took it over. And it's gonna take us some time to get out, but we have come leaps and bounds, uh, with the quality of service that's coming out of the police department, and you have a lot of mi- young men and women that are working there now, some old-school people, that are truly dedicated to fixing some of the concerns and issues within the community, and, and we're working on it. But this project, I think it, I, from my perspective in my chair, I think it does much more positive than any negative. Are there some, are there some concerns? Absolutely. If I'm a resident across the street, or if I'm a business owner, or if I own a house, uh, that this could potentially impact, yeah, I'm gonna have some concerns of it. But for the overall good of the community itself, I think this is a positive and the right step. Not that I have an opinion on any of this, I'm kinda on the fence.
Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um, I'd like to ask Dan to, I have one question for him that I wanted to ask he, to clarify, and then see if he can, uh, if he had any follow-ups, but there was one pertinent question. If, if your permission, he can come back to the question.
Dan, if you wanna go back up to the mic.
Dan, there is, you were talking about housing for, possibly housing for, um, uh, the school district, and that's, that's may, may or may not happen. Um, and there was comment about eighty-twenty HUD, that, that eighty would be senior and twenty wouldn't. Can you kinda put some more detail as to that, that smaller percentage of what we were calling workforce housing? Who would that be, and what would be the restrictions on, on them?
Sure, so let's separate out any, um, of those school units.
Okay.
Just think about the rest of the units. The way that the funding source works is that, at a minimum, eighty percent of the units must go for seniors, fifty-five. It doesn't mean, so, excuse me, so sixty-four units, eighty percent, or twenty percent is thirteen units.
Okay.
So, there are technically thirteen units that may not be for people fifty-five plus. It could very well all be for fifty-five plus. It doesn't mean that you have to hit exactly eighty percent, you have to be above eighty percent for that funding to work. So, the other folks that could qualify for them are also people who have the same affordability, uh, that they're trying, that they're trying to reach. There's, uh, there, there's no, like, HUD housing here, I didn't, I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, I just, just to...
It's all tact, it's all, it's all, um, low-income housing tax credit housing. And that's actually run by the IRS, so if we mess up, you don't wanna mess up with the IRS. So, those, it, it, it could very well be a hundred percent senior.
So then, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, so then, if, if there was a, uh, a chance that, that you did strike that deal, would that, those units be subtracted from that twenty percent? So, it, it may be that those twenty percent is, is straight, um, not, not, uh, affordable senior, but, but workforce, uh, at a higher rate?
The, the, no, all, the, the six or eight units that could be potentially the teacher housing would be sort of workforce pricing. The, the rest have to be affordable housing, sixty percent or below. So, that's, that would be what, uh, if there was eight units, it would be fifty-six units have to be there. Of the fifty-six units, um, my math here, uh, sixty-four minus thirteen, fifty-one of them have to be seniors. It could be all of them.
Okay.
It's a little confusing, I know, it's just, but what we're talking about that aren't senior housing units is a minuscule number of units.
Yeah.
So, it's not...
And, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, one more question. But do they also have to apply, um, adhere to the, the no-crime standard that the seniors have, where if they get in trouble, or they have, you know, any type of record, or, or get arrested, that they will lose their housing?
Yeah, there's, I mean, Sally said, there's, there are background checks before anybody can get into this. There's, there's crime checks, there's, um, there's income checks, there's all these different things that have to happen.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, the, the...
Citizens have to go through a screening process?
That's what I wanna do. I have a question.
The more stringent the market rate...
So, with the HUD, HUD housing, if you will, the, no, but they're gonna have some, some vouchers correct, is, is a low-income HUD housing, right? Is that what we're going at?
We call it affordable. The funding mechanism is low-income housing tax credit is how it's termed, so it's affordable.
The Lytech units, the low-income housing tax-funded units.
But yearly, they'll go through an audit with the property manager.
Correct.
Based off of their income. That will fluctuate, but it, it, once approved and qualifying to live in that, in there, they're not just gonna be thrown out on the street because their income changed.
So, it's, the, the whole programs is, um, I guess, kinda governed by HUD, but it's not HUD housing. So, there's, there's all these different definitions that get really confusing, but, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I don't wanna get into the weeds too much here, but, uh, listening to some of the comments, um, uh, one struck me, uh, about the recycling ban and, and how we're going to manage to keep this unit, you know, at a proper sanitary level. And I, I don't even know if it's proper, but I have a daughter that I'm supporting going to school in Phoenix. She's in a four-story apartment complex. Uh, there's many, many units, way more than this. Um, and one thing that struck me that I never thought about it until I, I signed on the lease as a cosigner, um, is that they offered, um, pest control and, uh, door-side trash removal. And I can see how something like that might be a concern here. In your management world and, and Gorman's, do, do they address those kinds of things?
So, we do do, um, all the, the pest control, that's part of our overall maintenance, so that's not anything that's up for residents. So, that's, that's all Gorman. With resp- with regard to the, the outside trash pickup, and, you know, I, I think our, our Bowman project is an example of that. Um, the, the trash receptacles for that project is actually across the street, um, where the parking, 'cause that, that project's actually built on just a really small sliver of land. I don't know if anybody's been to O'Gallus, but it's literally like a block from the border. So, in that case, they have a, a, a room at the end of every quarter where people put their trash, and then the maintenance staff carries it. So, it's all different for, for each project. We do, as, as, as Dana mentioned, there is a trash receptacle that's planned on the, on the end of the site. This is the very preliminary, you know, plan, as we all know, but we've dealt with all sorts of different configurations. As Dan said earlier, eight different, um, you know, renovations of, of historic schools. We'll figure it out, how to, how to make it work for the, for the community and so forth.
Okay, it was just something that struck me.
Yeah, as soon as you sign on those leases, you tend to, to realize different things.
Yeah, I know.
Any other question?
Another question? I don't have a question, I do have a comment. So, like, you, I got to go on a tour of three different of their facilities, and the way that they're kept, it, it was amazing. Their, the paint was touched up, not a, there was not a speck of dirt, like, it, they were, they were clean, very clean facilities. The, the residents that were there that we got to engage with were happy, pleased to live there. They, they had smiles on their faces. And then hearing what, you know, in the meetings that we were with in them, that they actually manage their properties. They, they come in themselves, they've taken over and started managing these properties themselves. So, to hear that, and then to hear these property managers go and say, they didn't refer to them just as residents, but as a family, as a community, and, and making that community within the community, but also within that space, and what the residents actually got to do, and how they make bread for each other, or they, they were line dancing at one of them, or they have all these different events, these probably life events that are so, so pertinent that people forget about. So, I'm, you know, I, I just applaud you for coming into wanting to fix up and restore a building, other than come in and try to knock it down and get rid of our history. So, I applaud you for that.
Good, Mike?
First of all, I'd like to think, now, first of all, I'd like to think, and it's hard to tell me, but, uh, I need to, uh, because I feel in love with the people, and I, I'm tired, actually, with the world, because, uh, I just feel in love with the communities, the people, everything around me. And I've actually opened a business, if I can, if I can tell how it is. And I know parking, visiting, uh, my service, seventy-six people, a hundred and eighty people, I don't know if, I have two parking places. So, I understand the parking, but that's everything. The house I live in was built nineteen oh seven. I don't have a driveway, I run the street, I run one street. I have friends or whatever, family come over, they make it work. They have two parking lots, so, um, they work it out with each other, with their neighbors, people, well. Parking should be... I can't, if you guys own a business, have a family, it's a move, so you came up with, uh, uh, and answer to my, I'm turning on it. Things, well, things, things, well, things have happened, you know. The multi-level, um, senior living, out of the valley, I just watched another one be cut up. I buy a new community college, it's just a wreck of that, uh, other, and it's probably, often, it's wrecked out. The four or five story building, it's, 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 so, that's your question about that, I don't think that's a mystery. I applaud you guys for coming, you know, taking a building like that, it's not the reason, but, and, you know, it's very decent. I know people that are actually at the teachers' school, back in the days, and there's people I'm talking about are in the lead. It's hard. That would be good. There's one right there.
There goes Micah. I went, I went to the one in Miami.
And on a personal note, I mentioned this earlier, but my, my mom and uncle are from Miami, and my, my grandfather worked at the mine. So, um, so it's a special place in my heart to be able to come in. My mom was married in the Episcopal church right down the street from Hill Street School. So, there's a lot of sentiment as well, um, I'm really excited to be able to make this impact to the community. Um, there's, there's such great potential here and, and dynamics, and, and yes, there's, there's some challenges, but with the revitalization of a community like this, um, you know, that, that, these are great problems to have, to bring more people in and, and to be able to solve problems like parking and so forth. So, so it's, it's good problems, it's, it's growth, it's stimulates, stimulating the, the economy again, it's bringing more to business and so forth. So, it's increasing property values, it's all those good things.
If we have any, if we don't have any comments or questions, uh, I want to bring up Linda for some comments before we go to council. Uh, we, we, every council member will have an, an opportunity to, to comment on this, uh, topic. No, no, you're good. You're good, no. You just took your turn, so...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, I'll keep mine brief. I think we've, we've hit upon a lot of thoughts and concerns, and, and we're, we're going through growing pains, and these are great problems to have, to, to have this project up for discussion. We wouldn't have seen this project come to us five years ago, so it's wonderful that we're here tonight to talk about it. Um, oh, let's say my name, Linda Donato, City of Globe Economic and Community Development Director, creeping up on being a senior a little too quickly. But, and I, I wanted to echo, um, uh, Councilman Lethem and, and tell, talk a little bit about our visit down to Tempe. We had the opportunity to visit three, three properties, and they were, they were all beautiful, they were pristine. One, one was, uh, ten years old, not a scuff on the wall, uh, just, it was, you walked in and it really did feel like you, you're walking into a, a Gorman experience, because they all had that beautiful look, very well-kept, and a very welcoming smell. You know, you, you walk into, you know, sometimes in a hospital, or, or, um, you know, other places, and you're like, oh, you know. This was very inviting, and so I thought that was really, really great to set that tone and, and to, that was a welcoming, you know, entry point for visitors and for, for residents. Uh, we had an opportunity to, to speak with Mayor Corey Woods from the City of Tempe, and the, the city council twelve years ago focused on bringing affordable housing into, into Tempe to, to help address their needs. And every concern that we have heard in this, these past, uh, six weeks, they also heard almost word for word, uh, twelve years ago. And, and I do believe, um, and our, our staff has addressed that we can get through these, these concerns and, and find, find, uh, resolution on that other side, because in five years, we, we won't remember this conversation, but we'll remember, we'll see a beautiful community that will be developed there, that will be filled with life. Uh, many of us have fond memories of, of the iconic Hill Street School building, going to class, some, some went in elementary school, some went all the way into high school, catching up with friends in the hallways, participating in JROTC, volleyball practice, and first dances in that, that iconic gym. I think we can all agree that the building has beautiful bones, but unfortunately, it has seen better days. And for years, this building has been deteriorating and has been a hazard to all of those around it. Uh, I think, I, we, we had a comment on our Facebook page about a year and a half ago, and it was from a visitor from Tucson, and she left this on our, our review, so this, this, you can still go and see it. Um, she, she wondered, "What is happening here where grand buildings such as the Hill Street School are left to rot, with broken windows and unkept grounds? This visitor, she used to visit Globe often, but this building leaves no desire for her to venture off the main road and explore Globe any further." I can't wait to invite her back in two and a half, three years, so she can come to that grand opening for the, the development. "We cannot continue to allow this building to deteriorate, or for visitors to pass through because of these unkempt buildings. Picture this building in five years, what would you like it to be like?" I know I can see it restored and brought back to its former glory, a hub of activity for our seniors who want to live in safe and active and walkable communities, and be part of a bustling da, historic downtown. Maybe some of these residents are going to relive their youth, maybe attend dances in the community gym, walk on the running path upstairs. That's, that's such a win for this, this building, that that is going to be brought back, um, and maybe open for, hopefully, for public use. And instead of a deterrent into our historic downtown, it'll now be an invitation to come and explore our amazing historic district. So Arizona's current, we know that Arizona's currently facing a housing crisis unlike any of us have ever seen before. We need up to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand units. Uh, this past week, Elliot Pollack, an Arizona-based economist, addressed the Arizona House Commerce Committee and shared this. "I've been doing this work since nineteen sixty-nine, and this is the worst housing supply and demand imbalance I've ever seen. We are at the precipice of a profoundly fundamental problem. We simply must increase supply, or it is, it is all downhill from here. It is affecting every Valley community, from every lo, every entry-level home to very, very high-end. You need to, you need to do some, we need to do something at any price point for any income level. I realize we're not the Valley or Santan, but we are feeling the, the ripple of this effect here. All of our major employers would agree that, that housing is, is a barrier for, for their future development. Uh, the housing shortage hurts, hurts our ability to, to attract and retain new employers and new employees. Uh, our recent draft housing study done by CAG demonstrates that we need housing units across all market segments, and this helps us to address a market segment that, that typically doesn't have the voice to, to come to the table. And we can see that tonight. Well, Gorman is proposing an amazing opportunity for our current seniors and our future seniors, and for the city and for our region. We're still focused on bringing those other, other units into, into the community, from workforce all the way to market and higher end. But these are not conditions that will prove, improve by itself, especially in rural, we all understand those challenges. So we must be active and proactive in our development for housing, for the sake of our city and, and our resident. So thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Linda. So now I'd like to at least, uh, give an opportunity to all council members, if they want to make a comment at this point, before we move on, uh, to further and, and to even, uh, to vote on the situation. I'll start with you, Mike, do you have any comment?
Do I have comments? Now, Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, I've lived, I've lived here in Globe now for forty-two years. I was on the Globe School Board, and we decided to clean up Hill Street School for, for the, uh, alternative, uh, learning, uh, s, school, and we had, uh, ESL classes in there, and then later ROTC and the, uh, Apache Student Club, or, I think, took over the building. And that was, I hate to do this, right in the middle nineties, early nineties. I think Linda was a junior, senior in high school when I was on the school board. So, it was a building that was really good, I mean, it was strong, um, you know. When we walked in it the other day, it was kind of, uh, a shock, seeing, you know, all the pigeon crap all over the place, and, you know, the broken windows and everything, and, and it's, it's just... But I, you know, I looked at it and I said, "Man, if, if we can do a project like this and bring this building back, we'll have, we'll have a jewel, we'll have, you know..." I, I don't know how many of you folks have been in, in the Bullion Plaza, I would imagine most of you have been in the Bullion Plaza. That's what we're gonna have, if not nicer, much nicer. And it'll be affordable housing for people who need, need the housing. And, uh, you know, I, Mariano knows how I feel, we talked about it quite a bit the other day, but, but, uh, I'm, I'm fully in support of this. I think the Gorman people will, will be a plus to have in our community for the next thirty years. And, uh, to me, that's a plus, so, I, I have no, no problem with, uh, approving the zoning change for this project.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse, you have any comment?
I, I, but, uh, I echo, um, to have parking be a hurdle, I see it as just a hurdle, it's something that you can overcome. Um, our downtown is constantly facing that hurdle. It's something that, it's gonna keep on going until we, as a council, address it, which I think we are, we're moving forward to address those issues. Um, I, to see, like I said, to see that old building, you guys come in and want to embrace our history, but not tear it down, that, that should be amended. Again, seeing what, the three properties that we saw, and talking to Mayor Tempe, and, oh, he spoke accolades of your company. I think that, that was amazing to hear what he had to say, and he, he's look, constantly looking for more buildings so, to bring your company in. That's amazing to me, so, I mean, even when we brought up the possibility of fifty-five and older generations raising their grandkids or their great-grandkids, if they would be allowed to move into your facility, and finding out that you actually have a facility somewhere else that is tailored to that, or possibly in the future, making another facility that's tailored to that, or market value, you know, based off that. I mean, possibilities are endless, and we have a lot of vacant buildings here, so, come on in. I mean, I think it's amazing what you guys have proposed, I think that you are wanting to be a community member. I don't see you as coming in and demanding, or, "This is what I want," but I do see you coming in and understanding the, the concerns of the residents around you, and trying to fix those, or remedy them, in, in the best way you can. So, for that, I applaud you, and I have no problem with bringing this in, I mean, with traffic, Annana is older, she, but she calls it the Globe Rush Hour, she doesn't go out during that time. But she, so she's made her, her traffic, when she, when she drives, she's made her own schedule of when she'll go out, when she won't, which I assume that'll probably happen, people make their own routines, people, when they feel safe, they will go out, or they'll stay in. If the, the traffic outside of the high school is too much for them during those busy rush hours, if you will, that interval, I, I, if I didn't feel like I was gonna be able to back up, I'll just stay inside, I'll plan my shopping later. So, I mean, it's, it's amazing what you plan to and hope to bring to this community. So, I have no problem there with moving this forward.
Thank you, Jesse. Mike, you got any more comments?
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Mike. Mariano?
Mr. Mayor, this evening, um, I had wanted to get a red chili burro at, uh, La Cacita, but they were closed on Tuesdays. So I instructed the taxi driver, "Well, let's go to Nerd Burger, I think they're open." So I went in, and sat down, and by chance, I sat in the bench seat that faced the window, across the street. So while I was waiting for my hamburger and, and munching on my hamburger, cheeseburger, actually, um, I saw weeds. I saw a forlorn building, I saw the future though, everything that it could be, and at that time of the day, a, a bustling little park. Residents walking and, and strolling. And then after I finished my hamburger, I, I took, um, the words of advice of several people in this room, and, and I walked down to City Hall. And it's not bad, because most of it's downhill. But to the point of, of accessibility, walkability, uh, an age group that would like to do that, and I did that, uh, except for the train, I had to walk an extra five hundred feet to get around it, but, the point is that, uh, it's a doable project. Um, walking does put a different, uh, perspective on, on what you're proposing, it's doable. Uh, you've had success in other places in Arizona, and have brought those amenities by doing the construction and, and putting the project in place. Boy, I'd sure like to, to see that building lit up at night, with the park and outside lighting, and all of the, all of the issues raised are, are solvable. I haven't seen anything yet that tells me it, it's a no, but the K-bosh on it. And how do you get around that? You, you rely on your department head, and the ordinances, and the regulations, and everything else that we have in place to, to make it a go, to help, uh, Globe, not just the investor. And I, I think it is a doable project, so in, in summation, um, I'm optimistic. We've approached other projects this year, and by the way, if you want to know what we're really up to, download a copy of Globe's strategic plan. You can figure us out real quick on what we're about, as far as being up here on the days. And I heartily recommend you download it and read it, we are in transition right now to update it. And, and I think we can all say, please bring us your comments, what you'd like to see in the future, and we'll try to get it on paper and get it considered. I think we have one more meeting, but really, if you want to figure us out, download the strategic plan. So this is just one component of several things that we've been attacking this year. And change is hard, um, I mentioned the, the P and Z thing with, with the other project. Change is hard, it, you have to, you have to approach it head-on and face that fear. And at the end of it, sometimes it won't turn out exactly the way you think it might, but at least you tried, and this is one of those moments. We're, we're trying to face that future, we have a plan in place, and all we're trying to do is try to meet that future and, and make it a better, uh, community and, and a better region. But I, I'm, I'm really optimistic about this, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mariano. Ready?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, I can say that, you know, this is my second term on council, and, and prior to that, I, I sat in council chambers since twenty fifteen, listening to, uh, the direction and, and the, um, the drive that council members had before me. Um, and I can say that it goes back some ways, that the council, the previous council, this council, the previous councils and, and previous mayors have taken on a progressive position with the city. Um, you know, we, and you're right, look at that strategic action plan, look at the general plan. It's a, it's a roadmap, roadmap to what we would like to see, and not only is that roadmap built by council members, but from feedback from the citizen, on what they would like to see in their cities, or in their city, I should say. And so we, we definitely are, uh, a progressive, um, diocese here of, of members. And we have a slew of issues and, and concerns that are being brought to us and needs. Obviously, I, I don't want to harp on the housing, everybody knows that. Everybody knows that we need, um, needs for all demographics. What this project brings is it narrows and it starts to bridge that gap from those demographics of people that no longer need a big house. And they may own it, and they want to downsize. And they gotta find ways to continue to live and prosper. So, I can imagine that, e, even at the scale that this is, sixty, eighty units, whatever, whatever that, you know, whatever it's gonna unfold to be, if, if, just a percentage of that, these people sell their homes, they move into a more, um, uh, a, a building, or a, a room, or a, an apartment that suits them best, they need income, so they rent, or they sell. But what that does is it also opens up opportunities for those individuals with families that might need a house, that can't find one now. So, marginal as it is, it's still a step in the right direction. So, we have a big pie of needs. What this project does here, in my opinion, it takes a sliver out of that pie, and it makes it something that we're, that we're trying to accomplish in, in, in creating this, in, in just, you know, managing this entire pie of needs. Um, I can say that this council, we're not just focused on this project. We have been, and councils before us, have been actively... We have been, and councils before us, have been actively working, and our staff, who are very, very capable, they are professionals, of going out and trying to meet the needs that council members and councils as a whole, as a body, say that, hey, this is what our constituents are saying, this is what the needs are, how can we get them? So we're attacking at all fronts. I can say that. And try and complete this pie. So this particular project is just a sliver of that pie. I don't feel that we should consider it should be this, if not this, it should be that. We have a golden opportunity. We have a developer that is probably the most qualified in renovating an old project, an old building, historic building, bringing it to life, and making it look like a rendition that we're looking at. And creating a community with, and Jesse said it, a community within our community. Is it going to benefit downtown? Absolutely. Is it going to benefit the business owners downtown? Absolutely. Is it going to benefit these people that live there? We have, and I've seen all the previous meetings, and there are great concerns that were brought up. But I believe that we have the professionals here to address the issues or concerns that are being addressed. Parking, we get it. This community was built in the horse and buggy days. We're a modern community now. We're a modern society. Everybody wants a car. Everybody needs a car. Some people need two cars. Want two cars, they only need one. So these are the challenges that a hundred-year-old community are going to have to address just today, but into the future. The confidence I have is that we have the people here, we have the professionals here, we have a professional developer here that has gone through this in other communities that can help our staff build and create that bridge, or that gap, fill that gap that we're experiencing. We have it everywhere, from our zoning administrator to our city managers to our department heads, police and fire chiefs, very qualified, very experienced. And very confident that they can help us work through these situations and these problems. The greater good, you got to weigh it out. What is the greater good? Revitalization, nineteen twenty-one building that is still standing strong, the gateway to our southern downtown area, which we're all committed to working and developing and revitalization of our downtown? It all lines up. It all lines up. We have been working to promote growth, and we have a golden opportunity to make that happen at this point. I applaud everybody. I encourage everybody to continue to bring the concerns forward so that we can manage and work through those concerns, so that we can all live harmoniously together. It should not be, I got mine, and I want to leave it with that. We have to live together. I just, I'm so elated that this opportunity is before us. I have talked about this since my first day of being on council, about revitalization, bringing back to life the light, taking away the blight. It all lines up. That's my opinion. That's my position. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. I've been writing some notes down, and I'll try and keep it brief. First, I want to thank, you know, all the people that participated in the first public hearing, the planning and zoning, the individuals here that participated in this public hearing. Thank you for your comments. You know, our planning and zoning committee that, you know, reviewed this also, our zoning administrator that guided them through it and helped through the process. I understand the concerns, and we've heard them, the parking are concerns, and I think this is time, there is time that we can work these things out. You know, we're not, this isn't going to happen tomorrow, but we can work on these problems. The safety issue around the school is, yes, that is a concern. I was up there when the school let out, and you can see, but it's only like a fifteen, twenty-minute event. There's a funnel effect, and then it moves on. But I think we can work in with the city, the school, the developers, and trying to make it safer. I pick up my grandson at Desert Ridge when I'm in the valley. Talk about craziness. That is craziness. This is nothing compared to trying to get out of a desert ridge, a five A school with that many kids in there. This is an eighteen, twenty million dollar project. We're never going to see it again. Nobody's going to come in here with that type of money and develop that building. We have had many try. I've sat in some meetings where we had people come in with some great ideas, retail, apartment housing, different things, but they have never come back to the table with that type of money. We'll never get this opportunity again. We need to be open-minded. Yeah, we need all levels of housing. We need high-end, we need medium, low, we need senior housing. And you got to come into a situation when you're developing something, you're not in it to lose money. If you put too many high-end apartments in there or condos, are you going to make your money? Are you going to really sell them? Are you going to rent them? We have to have a mechanism that somebody has an opportunity to take advantage of credits and everything else to get that funding, to make it work. Mariano talked about the Cora Village Apartments. We talked about the low-income apartments right there by Wendy's. I live right next to by them, and I was one of them that was against it when they came in, because they told me it's low income and all this stuff. And I've seen a history of some low-income apartments in the community that were bad. But I'll tell you what, to this day, they have kept their promise. Those apartments on the outside are amazing. I live right close to where they exit. I have not had no issues with traffic, and I have never, I have not seen any issue with crime down my street or any around there. So I was initially against it, but after seeing what they did, I was for it. I moved there in seventy-six, nineteen seventy-six, to Pioneer Hills. That was the last development, I think, this community, the large one that has had. There was only two streets on Pioneer Hills. I was one of the first to move into that area. And we've been there, what, forty-six years now? And we need more development. We haven't had a development like that since then. A comment that was made in one of the hearings, and I was appalled with, why don't we just tear the building down and build new? I didn't believe that I heard that. This building is a unique historic building, and it has historic value. It's a gateway to the southern end of our community. If we seen what we did to North Broad Street and just brighten that up with the wording and the pillars and stuff, people now see that, and they come into the downtown area. Imagine what they would do, seeing a building that had nice historic windows and was fixed up. That would be amazing. And I, too, also, I've sat at Nerd Burger, and I look across the street and I see a bad, torn-down building that's falling apart. I see grass and weeds and pavement. Imagine sitting in Nerd Burger and seeing a building, what they're offering for us And I agree. Look at our strategic plan, look at our general plan. This fits right into what we plan, we hope that our future looks like. Three of the things we identified in our studies was housing, and that's what we're addressing. Recreation was another one, and we're going forward with it right now. We're going to see a lot of amazing things, recreation happening in 2022. And education was our last one, and that's something for a future date. The two things we can address are housing. I think this project would be amazing for our community. I think we do have some concerns that can be worked out, but we have time to do that. So I do support this project at this time also. I would like to turn it over to Dana now and explain our motion, or what do we, where do we go from here?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayors, you have some language, if you can see on your screen before you. So we have a blank there, not knowing, obviously, how you felt about the project. It sounds like there is consensus, a motion to approve rezoning case number Z twenty-one dash oh five and ordinance number eight seven eight, which is actually the ordinance that the city would adopt with the approval of this agenda item. And then you just need a second, once there's motion, and a second, just like any other agenda item. You can vote.
Let's all make it.
I'll make it. Ready? Mr. Mayor, if I would, if I may, again, the blank, as I move to approve the rezoning case Z dash twenty-one dash zero five and ordinance number eight seven eight. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the rezoning and the ordinance. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Dana, the site plan will come back to city council? Okay, so I just want to confirm that and let the applicant know that, and the public know that we will, the site plan will come back to council once we have resolution of some of these issues. On that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you very much. We'll go to item C, consideration to approve, resolution number eighteen forty-eight, call of election for the August second, twenty twenty-two primary election and the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll read the resolution into the... Resolution number eighteen forty-eight, a resolution of the Marin Council of the City of Globe, County of Pila, State of Arizona, designating election dates and purpose of election, designating the deadline for voter registration, designating the place and the last date for candidates to file nomination papers. Council pleased with that reading.
Yes.
Before you tonight is the City of Globe's official call of the twenty... The seats up for this call are districts three, four, five, and six. With the passage of resolution number eighteen forty-eight, the county will be officially notified that the city will be, plans to be on the ballot, and the public will also be notified. With the passage of this resolution, the clerk's office will be accepting nomination paperwork from candidates between March fifth and April the fourth. The primary election is, will be on August the second, and I don't, the deadline for voter registration is July the fifth. Have any questions?
Is this an item that needs to be approved tonight, or is it a move-forward item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I request that council waive the rule and approve resolution.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we waive the rule and accept resolution number eighteen forty-eight as presumed by the clerk.
Motion, a second, for approval of resolution eighteen forty-eight. Do we have any further discussion?
I had a kind of paperwork in this March script.
Yes, yes. Candidates can pick up packets and circulate petitions, but petition, the nomination packet has to be filed between March the fifth and April the fourth in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. We'll go to action items. Item A is council will hear an update on the twenty twenty-two redistricting requirements, and will direct staff to proceed using proposed redistricting maps one oh one, one oh two, or one oh three effective for the twenty twenty-four election cycle. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, as you recall, at the last regular council meeting, I think from January twenty-fifth, council was advised that the city was required to redistrict city districts. We hired a professional to help us with those realignments of district maps, and those were presented to council with those, I think we had three proposed changes. Since that meeting, the county recorder informed the city that the redistricting would not go into effect until the twenty twenty-four election process. There was some changes that the county needs to make that just weren't feasible to be made in that short amount of time for a well-run election. So they've pushed that effective date back to twenty twenty-four after legal opinion from the county attorney's office. So tonight, we, staff is asking council to just continue to move forward with our process. We've got Bruce Adelson in line to help us finish the process. The deadline has been moved to July of this year, so we still need to complete this process, and we've gained some momentum, and we just want to continue, continue on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what we would be asking tonight would be for council to express any preference on the one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, and then we would publish that one and have the focus on that, and then come back on the twenty-second of February and have your input and possibly adopt that. And so if council, I think some members of council have some opinions and some choices, and so if it's not too complex, I think you might be able to wrap this up and pick one to focus on, and let the public look at that one and see what, see where the changes are and go from there.
Do we want to pick that one tonight?
If council's ready to. I think that, I know that a couple of members of council had some discussion.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While it seems like my district is a big district and has to be readjusted, and I've taken a look, you know, I was on the redistricting committee for the county, so I have a little bit more knowledge, not knowledge, but a sense of what's going on. I, if it's affecting my district the way it is, I would say that I like map one oh one or one oh three. Okay? I think those make the least amount of changes, but they keep everything contiguous to the districts that have to pick up those extra voters. So that's just my feelings. It could be either one of those two, whatever the council thinks, or whatever they don't think, you know, I mean, it's up to you guys.
One oh one and one oh three, it seems like they're the left.
Yeah.
I don't have to go with...
Mr. Mayor, help me out, guys. I'm the one in trouble. The point is, we have the greatest number of decrease, and I actually don't have a preference for any of the three scenarios, because you guys are the ones who are suffering. I'm just commenting that I'm comfortable with any of those three. And that doesn't affect until twenty twenty-four? Is that correct? Whatever you guys deign to think about, that's fine with me. Preferably, I like one oh three. That's my... Two, I would take one oh three. Or I would give up one oh three.
Freddie, you got any preference?
Well, Mayor, as I understand it, District One is not effective in any way here, so...
Well, councilman, let me correct you. It has changed, because we've discussed what part was your district, what part was mine, and the city maps were actually wrong, and you do pretty good.
I'll be the one that upset the apple cart. Actually, Mayor, I, you know, I'll have to concur with my fellow council members on what their preference would be. members on what their preference would be, uh, because there's really no major.
That would be one oh-three?
One oh-three. If the consensus is one oh-three, I'll do one oh-one. Serious. One oh-three.
That'll work.
One oh-three.
I'm kind of in the same boat, I'm District Six, but, you know, I give up some to, uh, Mariano, his district, but not really, you know, gain some, so, um, I'm open to also and I, I, I kind of prefer after looking at them, yeah, one oh-three is a kind of a, a really a, a good common point, I think.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, the one oh-two tends to, to make a big, a big, take a big chunk out of District Two. I think one oh-one and one oh-three just, um, adjust the borders of five, four, and, and three in, in order to get the balance right. Uh, Council Mariano's district is going to expand, so it's going to increase, so he'll be back up to full, full speed, full, full staffing. And, um, and so, um, I, uh, you know, I, I looked at this to see if, if I had any, any technical or professional advice. Um, I did think one oh-two had, was problems in the big switch. I think, uh, one oh-one and one oh-three both could be easily explained and, and a lot of impact to residents. Uh, and if the council preference is one oh-three, um, I would recommend that, that you motion to, to select one oh-three for further, um, discussion and, and to be posted on the web and, uh, brought back for final approval, uh, the next available meeting.
No move, Mr. Mayor. Got a motion to second for recommending map one oh-three to be posted on the website?
And, and brought back.
Brought back. So we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Item B is discussion direction to staff to move forward with the advertisement for the invitation bids, C S dash two zero two-two dash zero zero one zero for Upper Penal Creek Bridge and roadway alternatives for the replacement of Upper Penal Creek Bridge number eight six zero three Connie's Bridge to be funded out of account number two one dash zero dash eight zero dash five two two zero one, CIP Penal Creek Bridge. Jerry.
Mayor, members of council, the item of the night. I'm just saying, uh, we, we have gone out, we have raised over four million dollars towards this project and, um, which includes, that includes the, the Cook bill that, that went through. Uh, we're getting ready to advertise this bridge, uh, be the first bridge we've replaced in over twenty years. And, um, and so it's pretty exciting. Uh, the couple of things that, uh, still need to be done is, uh, I would like for you to, uh, give direction to move forward with this item contingent on the lawyer's final approval, because the attorney and I have not ironed out a couple of details. And, um, and then also there are, um, a geotech, uh, report and, and, uh, environmental report on the old bridge that, that wasn't part of your packet that will be part of the bid documents. And what that does is gives us a better chance of getting a better bid because we didn't find asbestos in the old bridge. And, and the geotech was a lot shallower, um, uh, bedrock than, than what, what we thought it was. So those two things are going to help us. So, um, with, with your permission to move forward on this, we should be able to, uh, to get, uh, everything out, uh, by, by the first of the month. And then, um, probably start construction sometime in June or July. So, uh, and we've only been working on it, what, three, four years, Paul?
Well.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we, we actually, um, we, we had our moments down at the legislature on this one, so, uh, Mayor, you're a member.
We may have some more moments.
Yeah.
Another project.
So anyway.
Jerry, this is slowly just the bridge, not the other, the, the roadwork, the, the other.
No, it's the roadwork too.
Is it the, okay, so everything will be?
What we've done is we priced this, uh, project out through the, um, the, uh, RF, RFB is, uh, with alternates. One being the alternate of the Hill Street, um, which is just beyond this, this, uh, going down straight toward, um, it's kind of ironic because this project will now, uh, most of the traffic will be traveling past it because they'll be going down this road. And so it's just kind of irony there. But, um, um, it's, that is an alternate. Another alternate is from cottonwood down to the new bridge, uh, the asphalt and the sidewalk that needs repaired on that. And the third alternate is the demolition of the old structure. So if we get some outrageous numbers on this, we can just say, hey, we don't want to do that and put it out on a separate contract, or if we decide to do part of it ourselves. Um, so, so we, we wanted to have that option, but we think there's enough money in the, left in, in the project, uh, to do all these items, so. And, and think about it, we'll, we had a new bridge going into cottonwood. We have a, um, asphalt that's going to connect that with, uh, the Connie's Bridge. And then we have a, um, new project that's coming in, in a couple of years and, um, and, uh, what, this is what we're calling, um, the Hill Street Corridor. So, uh, the Hill Street Corridor is, ties everything together. So we can make an actual circuit, circuit on all new stuff. And it ties the downtown area, so. This, this is, uh, what, what was, what was that book you said? The S A, oh. Strategic Area Action Plan, uh, that's, that, that's what we did. Final completion, we're, we're talking probably nine months. Uh, depends on the kind contractor, nine months beyond the time we did it. So it's probably, um, March of next year. I think so, yeah. Depends on the contractor and, and we're not building the Pennile Valley Bridge, so, so, I mean, I mean, it's not going to take us two years. Just never enough, right? If you got money, I can build it.
Or some nice, nice signage on the south end of, um, the, our downtown corridor.
That's true.
By, by an old school.
Make it an art.
It's called Hill Street.
That's true, I, I'm gonna put on a different hat for that one. But, uh, you know, this is exciting.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, the Hill Street project was exciting, but this is exciting.
Like to make a motion if nobody else has any questions or comments. Uh, I motioned to direct staff to move forward with the advertisement of the invitation for bids, C S dash two zero two-two dash zero zero one zero for the Upper Penal Creek Bridge and roadway alternatives for the replacement of the Penal Creek Bridge number eight six zero three, also known as Connie's Bridge, to be funded out of the account twenty-one dash eighty dash five two two zero one, CIP Penal Creek Bridge. The stipulation.
Could you make the contingent on the attorney's final approval?
Yes, thank you. Contingent on our attorney's, uh, approval of, of the.
Of the language.
Of the language. Yeah.
Motion to second for approval of item six B. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any late agenda items? Any call to the public? Second call to the public?
No, nothing in the, none.
Scheduling of meetings?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, just for, for your reference, um, I do intend to put, uh, an item on the agenda on the twenty-second about the, um, the environmental study for the Air Force, uh, request. Um, and so there's no need to, to, to bring, to, to ask that. That is already planned to, to bring something forward on the twenty-second. Uh, and so, so you have that. And, um, oh, did we, oh, we're at schedule of meetings, aren't we?
Yeah, we're scheduling the meetings, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, there you go, I, I did it myself.
Consideration of future agenda items. Oh.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a follow-up to an email that, uh, I found. Oh, I think we're looking at February's fifteenth, sixteenth, either ten to twelve or.
And, and we're, we're thinking two, but if you're more, you know, might go three, depending how much.
Two or three hours?
Yeah. So ten, uh, what'd you say? Ten, twelve?
Can you go ten to twelve or?
Two.
Three, final two.
Yeah, whatever's good for the workers.
Yeah. And we would be, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, I would highly encourage that we over schedule for three and try to get it done in two. That we go, um, what, what we're at? Two to five. Okay. Yeah.
What, what were the dates again?
Fifteen, sixteen. Just bread and water.
Would that be on, uh?
Uh, February.
February, yeah. Can do that if it's on the sixteenth.
I can only do the sixteenth.
Yeah, I can only do that on the sixteenth. Yeah. Wednesday the sixteenth.
Wednesday the sixteenth?
The only day I could do, I, I know.
At what time? Two?
Two to five.
You're gonna send something out?
I will.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, members of council, also, I, I think you have emails in here that on February the twenty-third, PAG is doing their legislative day. And, um, and so that would be something, I think it's in the morning, but if you could take a look at that and see who wants to, uh, um, participate, so. Uh, yeah, I believe if you, if you would like to, what's that? I, I think some, I, I think that some want to, some may want to zoom, but, but if you want to go down, we'll go down. Uh, the twenty-third of February?
Yeah, I'd like to go down.
Let's see.
Twenty-third.
Have somebody fill in for me.
So, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's also, we've been, um, council's invited to a tour of, um, uh, resolution mine on the twenty-second of March. And so while we're, if, just mark your calendar there if you'd like to.
Please confirm my sentiment.
Yeah.
We can make a move. The topic we didn't go through at the. It's very wet down there.
Went down Old Dominion before they buried it. Do we have a consideration for any future agenda items?
And, and this, Mayor, members of council, that, now I would toe in that we're going to be doing the twenty-second, that. Um, I also, we, we're on the, the sixteenth now, we're going to be talking about, um, a policy that, that coincides with this. And so unless there's something pressing, um, uh, that we want to put on there, um, I'd like to, I'd like to ask council to consider we discuss the policy, uh, and then could, we're, we're looking to change up the, the, how we do this, just to be more accurate and more determined and. Yeah, yeah, and so.
We have, yeah.
So unless there, unless there's something that, that's very pressing that, that you'd like me to consider, or you'd like to give direction to do.
Yeah, there you go. No, we have no E session?
No E session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Meeting adjourned.